Okay. Well, welcome to the September 19th Planning Commission meeting. I want to let the record reflect that Vice Chair Spolling is absent. If you'd be kind enough to join me and stand as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. The public is permitted to address the Planning Commission on items that are on the consent calendar, requests for future agenda items, new items, or items not on the agenda. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. To accommodate those speaking in person and via Zoom, we will call upon those in person first and then to Zoom. If necessary, we will repeat the process. If you are here to speak in person, please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you wish to speak via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom during this item to speak under public comments. Persons are required to limit their remarks to five minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson, subject to approval of the Planning Commission, or a reduction of time is stated by the chairperson, subject to the approval of the Planning Commission. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission chairperson, and if relevant, they may be direct... They may direct them to the appropriate staff member. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. We would like to acknowledge that we have received zero general public comments that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Copies of these comments would be made available on the city's website on the meeting information page, if there were any. Finally, please make note that the commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within 10 business days.
Through the chair, I have one speaker card in person. No hands currently raised in Zoom. First up is Danny Dorman.
Good evening and welcome back. You were missed last week, or last meeting. I want to talk about Bridelgate in a second, but I've been told that I've been disrespectful in various meetings I've attended. All I can say is that I say what I mean and I mean what I say. But I've never sniped at any of you or the council, even when I had to bring the Brown Act violations against another body. Last meeting, our Assistant City Attorney argued with a planning manager and basically ended the statement with "we'll agree to disagree." And I've said this on social media, if I had a lawyer that told me that "we'll agree to disagree" on something that's in my best interest, I'd probably be looking for another attorney. Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury. And so I want to put it on the record that... And I don't even know how to say the words in polite company. So I'll just leave it at that. It was truly disrespectful. It highlighted what I always gripe about, which is staff mixes what is in the best interest of our city with what's in the best interest of someone else. And the twain should never meet. Bridelgate. I want to speak about Bridelgate and the upcoming class action lawsuit. I'm not a mind reader, but I think about my two pet peeves, water and fire prevention. Bridelgate's been spoken about back and forth, back and forth, with little if any regard to water and fire prevention. Water, apparently, we don't have the stamina to fight that, even though there are SBs on the books that are drought-friendly and we should take advantage of them. But fire prevention, that one is something I don't even know why it's not brought up. CNO originally put in for 177 homes. I haven't looked at those original drawings, but I suspect that it's easier to mitigate any type of fire hazard with 177 homes as opposed to almost 300. If you look at the roads and the excuses that are given by CNO's team, and in particular, the man whose name I shall not mention, there is nothing in there that shows us that these people will be protected, not only the people who are living there, who moved there and don't know anything about us, but the residents who are living there. And looking at the roads, and we talked about how San Jose is backed up during the afternoons and they have to cut through the Rayleigh's parking lot. And that's a normal day. And even with the two extra streets and the changing of a cul-de-sac, it's doubtful that traffic will be truly alleviated. Now add to that a fire, a catastrophic fire. Hence the upcoming class action lawsuit. Because if this goes through, and it goes through the way it is right now in its present iteration, that will be on the table. And for those who think, ah, Danny, you're over-exaggerating, three years ago, the sky was orange. So catastrophic fires, if you don't think that's possible, you probably really shouldn't be working on planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Going to Zoom to double-check. I do not have any hands raised, but those in Zoom, if you would like to speak during open public comment, now is the time. I have a hand raised, Anne S.P. Go ahead.
Hi there. I wanted to make some comments on the Hanson Lane project. I live on Hanson Lane.
Hello. I'm sorry. That is something that we are going to be addressing here shortly. It's no problem. Please do come back and join us. I'd be interested to hear your comments on it. Just give us a moment and we will get to that agenda item. And I look forward to hearing your comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Double checking in Zoom. Anyone who would like to speak during open public comment, which means anything not on the agenda, now is your time to raise your hand. Through the chair, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar. There is one set of minutes for the regular meeting on September 5th, 2023. Is there any discussion or do I have a motion? And just to be clear, I was listening to the entire meeting, so I am more than willing to cast my vote on this, this item as well.
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The next item is the public hearing to consider conditional use permit and design review amendment for a new building at Vic Stewart's Plaza. Associate Planner Sarah Wheeler will present the staff report. Sarah?
Hi, good evening. If April, you could share my screen when you get a chance, that would be great. Good evening, Planning Commission, applicant members of the public. Before you tonight is a conditional use permit amendment and design review amendment, CUP 06-32A1 and DRO 6-21A1, to further reduce a previously approved parking reduction for the site by 30 additional parking spaces, which is associated with a request to reduce the restaurant hours for Vic Stewart's to dinner hours only, opening at 4:00 p.m. This would then facilitate a design review amendment to allow for the construction of a new 5,095-foot, 5,095-square-foot shell building known as the Building E, to be proposed within Vic Stewart Plaza, generally located within the... Located on the corner of John Muir Parkway and Eagle Rock Way. The proposed building would be located on the northwest portion of the parcel behind the Arco Gas Station and within the existing parking lot. For some background, in 2007, the project applicant, John Harrington, who is still the property owner today, received approval of a design review application for the development of five new buildings totaling approximately 26,885 square feet. The approval also included a conditional use permit for 10,749 square feet of a restaurant known as Vic Stewart's, which is also still in operation today. The general plan designation is general commercial, which allows for mixed commercial uses and services that provide and serve specific areas of the city and neighborhoods near arterial intersections. The project is located within Sub Area C of the PD-49 zoning district, which is intended to implement mixed-use development. Sub Area C specifically allows for professional offices and business offices as well as general retail sales and service uses as permitted uses. As mentioned, the proposal includes a conditional use permit to reduce the business hours of operation for the Vic Stewart Restaurant, as well as a conditional use permit for parking of a reduction of 30 additional spaces due to the mix of uses within the center and the varied operational hours. Lastly, a design review amendment is being requested for 5,095 square feet of a new building known as Building E. The existing building... Excuse me. The existing buildings are located on the perimeter of the parcel along the Eagle Rock Way frontage, with Vic Stewart located on the corner of Balfour and Eagle Rock Way. The parking is internal to the site. On the screen, you can see and find the proposed site plan on the left, as well as a Google Map image on the right showing in red the indicated proposed rough location of the Building E. Given that the restaurant does not see as many daytime customers, the applicant is requesting to reduce the hours of operation to serve dinner only. This would further reduce the demand for parking during the day. The property owner is proposing to utilize limited restaurant hours as a way to further... A way of further reducing the parking while at the same time creating an opportunity for additional building square footage on the site. Per the city's municipal code, Chapter 17.602012J, parking may be reduced through a conditional use permit based on the mix of land uses within the center. There are projected hours of operation and number of parking spaces occupied at peak hours. The applicant provided a parking study, which reported 192 observations over 238 days of the existing parking lot capacity. On average, 48% of the stalls within the center were occupied with a maximum occupancy at 80%, which totals 125 parking spaces. Given this information, staff determined that there is sufficient mix of businesses and hours to allow for a reduction in parking. The proposed buildings are architecturally designed to match the existing buildings on-site and designed by the original architects for consistency and cohesive design theme of the center and distinguishes architectural heritage as intended by the design guidelines. This includes the use of farmhouse architecture, strongly influenced by the architectural heritage of Brentwood and the surrounding area. This also incorporates lapped siding, gridded windows, hip roofs, and dormers. The architectural elements, along with the varied earth-tone color palette, created a... Creates an attractive and visually interesting center. The following slide provides the summary of the required development standards for PD-49 Sub Area C and demonstrates the proposed building will be in compliance with these standards. Given that the proposed project complies with and is consistent with the general plan, zoning, and design guidelines, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 23-016, approving conditional use permit amendment, CUP 06-32A1, as well as Resolution Number 23-017, approving design review amendment, DRO 6-21A1. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant, who is Lance Cronell, is here. He's also the architect, as well as the property owner, John Harrington. Thank you.
Does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
I do. I was just trying to do the math on the 80% usage. How many parking spaces total would be the 20% that were vacant?
So 80% was 125 parking spaces and I believe... Sorry.
I think it's about 30 spaces.
Not good at math in my head, but basically, yeah.
It's about 30 spaces. So the question I have is if we take away 30 spaces, then it would be 100% full, but we're adding five businesses. Well, anyway, that was my question, is 30 spaces is... Was the minimum number of vacant spaces, and that's about how many we're taking away if we do this?
Yeah, you're correct, because there's 125 at the 80%, and then they're proposing to bring it down to a total of 126 spaces.
And the other question I have is, if I recall correctly from reading the staff report, there was already a reduction in the number of parking spaces. Can you tell me what the number of parking spaces would be if they hadn't taken that reduction?
Yes, give me one moment, if you don't mind. I'm going to pull up the staff report really quick.
Thank you.
So initially, they would have been required to have 188 parking spaces, but they were approved for 156.
Okay, so that's a reduction of about 32 spaces. All right, thank you.
Okay. That being said, would the applicant like to come forward and address the Planning Commission?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. My name is Lance Cronell with SDG Architects. We're located here in Brentwood, California. First, I'd like to thank staff, Sarah Namely and Eric Nuthenias for all their work on this project. It was a great effort to get to this point, and we appreciate all the hard work to getting us here. We don't really want to reiterate what Sarah has already done, so we'll leave time for questions and comments and any other comments that you may have. So I'll be available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comments first, and if you would take your seat, we certainly will take notes and have you come back up.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the chamber for public comments on this item.
Through the chair, I have no cards for anyone in the audience. And I currently have no hands raised in Zoom.
Very good. Very simple. I like it when it is. Okay, that being said, the commission, do you have any questions for the applicant or any discussion? Okay, very good.
I have a few questions, please, the applicant.
Yes. Okay.
And through the chair, just before you begin to question, Mr. Cronell, if you wanted to take a vote on closing the public hearing
Yes.
and asking your questions afterwards, that would be useful for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, I'm closing public comments.
Do you want to go ahead and take a vote on closing the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Commissioner, good evening.
Good evening. Couple of questions. Do you know approximately how long, once construction starts, the project will take?
From ground break to turnkey, given weather delays, you're probably looking at probably six to eight months. If we do start as soon as we're able to, we'd like to be kicked off sometime late this year.
And during the construction, is there a plan on closing additional parking places? Where are they going to store material and equipment during the building phase?
Yeah, that's a great question. We'll work with the city staff and the building department to make sure that we minimize any parking impediments or restrictions. That has not been determined just yet, but we do have certain areas that we can utilize. And again, working with the building department, we'll work to minimize those constraints with the parking.
The last question I have, I don't know if you'll have an answer. I'm curious how the data was collected. I see, I forget what the numbers were, but I think there was over 283 days... Or 283, yeah, days, 178 points of interest or points of... Numbers, parking spaces that were being utilized at the time. I frequent that area quite often. Several of us do. On the weekends is my big concern. What I noticed in the report was a lot of Fridays and Saturdays not listed. There were some that were listed at 80% at about 120 cars, but there were several that were missing. And so I'm just curious, because I think, I know Commissioner Flor alluded to parking. I think that's going to be a large concern with everybody in that specific area, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a great question. As you know, our firm here is located in Brentwood. We have about 40 employees that live in and around town. And during the time that we were going through the design and the entitlement process, we had asked many of our staff and some others to provide observational reports on their way home or coming to the office or going to lunch, whenever you're in the area, to drive through the parking area and to dictate how many, count how many parking spaces were being taken at that time. And those were reported to us, and then we worked with the staff to aggregate that information. One of the big parking questions that have come up in the entitlement process was the time of use and the total number of parking spaces. And we really seek the guidance of the city staff in terms of the uses that were there during the 8:00 to 5:00 period, and then the restaurant use from essentially 4:00 to midnight or 2:00 a.m. And it was determined by the city that it was adequate enough to have enough of a parking load to substantiate this type of project. So with that guidance, we proceeded with the application to make sure that, once it is built, that there will still be adequate parking for that space.
The last question I have, and I don't know if you can answer or not. Was there any other layout or way to move the building, whatever, east-west, in any orientation that would allow for additional parking spaces to be utilized? Or is there anything... I'm looking at where there's electrical junctions and things where there could be parking places, so I don't know those can be... I think they aren't existing there, so you can't move those. I'm just looking to see if there's a way for additional parking spaces.
Yeah, we worked very hard with staff internally and with the design team to make sure that we had a good balance between leasable square footage, accessible parking, being placed outside the C3 or the stormwater control areas. So this was really the only spot that was available on the site that allowed the maximum number of parking spaces to exist with this new building. One of the great things about this project is that we're allowing 5,000 square foot of more commercial space to allow for retail, office, professional use in this area. That'll be occupying that space primarily from 8:00 to 5:00. John Harrington, the owner of Vic Stewart's, has worked with the city staff to adjust the hours of operation for the evening time use of Vic Stewart's from lunch to dinner to only dinner, to make sure that there is a clean break between the evening use of the parking spaces and essentially the day uses of the parking spaces. There is a bit of overlap there, as staff is coming in for the restaurant and some employees are leaving their office jobs.
Thank you.
Commissioner Flor?
Sure. Lance. I have questions about the condition of approval about not allowing the restaurant to open before dinner. And I understand that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the statement I think I read in the staff report was that there's not a lot of lunch trade there right now. But that's right now, and conditions of approval are forever. So if we put on a 4 o'clock opening time on that restaurant, it would never be able to open before 4:00. And as I'm sure you're aware, there's a major business project, the Innovation Center, going in the next freeway exit up. We get a bunch of professionals in there. All of a sudden, that's going to develop a lunch trade for Brentwood. It's kind of one of the reasons Brentwood is so hot, to have people working in Brentwood is so they, you know, spend their lunch hours, they do shopping, and they go to restaurants. So don't you think that down the road, they might want to open that restaurant back up at lunchtime?
Short answer is no. The owner and I have spoken about this at length, about giving up the lunchtime service in exchange for having this extra building and allowing for more commercial into the space. The owner is very comfortable with omitting the lunchtime service and just doing daytime. I mean, I'm sorry, dinner service, starting at 4:00.
Okay. Another question I have is, do you feel like you're going to be able to fill these spaces? People in the past have suggested needing to come up with novel uses for things that are designated commercial, because there just isn't any market for commercial spaces. And so now we see the addition of five spaces. I believe there's actually a vacancy or two in that shopping center right now, is there not?
Currently, yes. There is a vacancy in the space.
Do you feel like you'll be able to fill those vacancies pretty quickly?
Absolutely. And really, that was the impetus of John Harrington reaching out to our office about creating this extra spaces. about creating this extra spaces, the demand that he's received for space and for tenants to occupy the space. Vic Stewart's Plaza kind of sits in a very unique area of town. It's right off the freeway, which allows for a lot of easy access on and off, inside and outside of town. And it also is a branded plaza. It has a certain character and quality that is a bit unique for the area. And Mr. Harrington has been feeling quite a bit of interest about getting tenants into the spaces he is in now. The vacancy rates are kind of a fluid thing. Sometimes they leave, but the rent and their leases are still ongoing through the end of a certain number. So you may see a store closed, but it's not necessarily means because the lease is up. Sometimes they leave for different reasons. So the appearance of a vacant space may not necessarily mean that it's not leased for that particular period of time. That could be a month or two months here and there. So perception sometimes is a little bit disconnected from the leasing opportunity.
Yeah, it's not my perception, it was just something that I heard as a person who watches planning commission meetings, that I heard in a previous meeting somewhere, somebody say something about having difficulty filling commercial space in Brentwood.
Yeah, and in certain types of areas of town, yeah, that could be the case. In this particular area for Vic Stewart's Plaza, the demand is high.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Brand?
So there's a handful of potential businesses that could, that are by right within PD 49 in sub-area C, this region, that at least from my perception could easily have hours that exceed 6:00 p.m. in terms of that, and have potential overlap with the, I guess, focused dinner hours of Vic Stewart's as it intends in the staff report. What types of mitigations might be in place to put larger bookends potentially on that timing so that we avoid any parking conflicts and things of that nature? As, you know, we're sort of, as I read it, as we're sort of shuffling something around. I mean, my personal experience of this has been that I've only seen it full in a handful of occasions as far as the full parking lot as it stands today. So I have less concern with that, I have more concern if we're going to take some of those spots out, how can we best understand that businesses coming in may be limited to certain hours? And if they're offered by right, do they know that going in if they were to secure a lease?
Yeah, that's a great question. John Harrington has been a great neighbor to its, you know, adjacent parcels and a good patron of Brentwood since 2007. Mr. Harrington wants what we want in terms of city of Brentwood, is making sure that it's a vibrant plaza with lots of businesses in there and an active commercial area. We're open to any bookends that you would like to add to ensure that those restrictions are in place, to ensure that the daytime parking and the evening parking are delineated in any clear way. We've had those conversations with planning staff as well, and we're certainly open to any type of parking restrictions for that particular building that the city would like to discuss.
Yeah, I definitely like the input of my fellow commissioners on that, but I think there's, there's just, there's a laundry list of possibilities. Obviously, some aren't super applicable based off of the sort of narrow nature and being a shared wall space and such, but I think maybe we can talk about that a bit. Then, as far as, there are certain businesses that would require conditional use permit.
Correct.
How do you see this parking lot adjustment and a building addition impacting those future businesses from a, it's like, at least the way I see it is, I'm seeing a heavy prioritization on the businesses that are there that then, that could be there?
Right, yeah, I mean, it's really, the onus is really on the owner to lease up the spaces in a way that maximizes tenancy, but also creates harmony within the flow of the entire plaza. So there are conditional use permit applications depending on the type of use. We don't have any tenants signed up for the project as of yet, so, you know, low leases have been signed for the property because it hasn't been built, so it's all speculative at this point. But we assure you that the uses that would be coming up, if they were conditional use permit eligible, that they would be going through the same paces and coming in front of the planning commission for evaluation to allow for the bookends to be put in place, to make sure the plaza as a whole runs in harmony.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I noticed that with your very detailed document here on Vic Stewart's parking lot, and I believe that Commissioner Ziegler had already addressed this. It appears that holidays, which would probably be more in tune with taking a lot of that space that we're speaking to, you guys are closed on Thanksgiving. It looks like you're closed on both Thanksgiving and Christmas, because I don't see any documentation or no data. Is that correct?
I do not know the answer to that particular question. I think that might be a little bit more specific towards Mr. Harrington. I don't, I don't know for sure if they're closed on Thanksgiving or Christmas.
I don't see any traffic, there's no information here.
Yeah, I would imagine those, the people during the survey were probably better occupied than going through a parking lot on Christmas or Thanksgiving.
And the reason I'm asking that, because I'm sure that the tenants, some of them, I frequent that plaza weekly, they're probably going to have extended hours. And so I'm just wondering how that, how you and/or the owner see that. At the moment, there's plenty of parking.
There is.
Down the road, as we become bigger in Brentwood, just don't want to see conflicts with potential folks coming in to do business in Brentwood. That's a big key.
Understood, and we're locked up with your thoughts there, and we want the same thing. We don't want parking issues. We certainly want a full parking lot, we want vibrancy, we want activity, we want commerce, we want tax revenue. We want all of those things for the city, but we don't really want conflict. We don't really want log jams and such. And the analysis, I believe, really kind of stipulates the fact that at the most, our observations were at 80% of the occupied, of the allowable parking spaces. So I think even under those circumstances, I would imagine some of those businesses, especially the office-type businesses, will be closed on Thanksgiving and Christmas, which will allow for more breathing room for the parking space as a whole.
I appreciate that. Well, I have no more questions for the gentleman. Okay. Well, I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Is there any discussion by the commission?
Should we discuss any hour requirements with respect to the additional businesses?
I believe so, yeah. So Commissioner Brand, seeing how you brought it up, let's have the discussion.
Well, I'm looking at the existing operating hours. I think it, normal business hours, right, something like 9:00 to 5:00, 9:00 to 6:00, something like that is relatively appropriate. I would have probably laid out the, I'm looking at table one on page 57. It's, to me at least, and I'd like to get everyone's input on this, is just, what do we, the morning, I'm less concerned about. It's the closing time of some of those businesses where it begins to overlap into the dinner rush that I think may need an upper, upper time cutoff, but love to hear discussion.
Well, I, I am, yeah, I'm interested in knowing if any of those five businesses could be food service businesses. I know there's a coffee shop in there right now. Or if they might be businesses that would want to stay open late. For instance, there's a compounding pharmacy there. I'm pretty familiar with a shopping center, I've been living next to it in Deer Ridge for like 11 years. So, you know, I don't go there very often, but I'm very well aware of it. So I don't know that you can say that those businesses are all going to shutter at 6:00 o'clock. I think there was even a fitness center in there at one point in time. They were, they were doing fitness training and those things would go in the evening. So the 4:00 closing, I mean, the 4:00 opening of Vic Stewart's doesn't make me feel any better. I mean, there's still going to be overlap. I can tell you that I went down there on Thursday afternoon. I just wanted to see. And again, I'm familiar with the parking lot, it is a very tight parking lot. I don't know if you, if you guys have driven in that parking lot, but it is a tight parking lot. And on Thursday afternoon, between 4:30 and 5:00, when I showed up down there, there were 12 cars parked in spaces that would be eliminated by this. And they were all the spaces that were on the side that was closer to the existing businesses. There were some empty spaces a little farther away. But if I, if in my head, I looked around, I tried to take those 12 cars and distribute them into the remaining empty spaces, and there just wasn't a lot left after that. We're talking, again, they've had that parking lot up to 80% capacity. So I don't agree that there's plenty of parking there. If they've been at 80% capacity, that means they had 30 empty spaces, and that's how many they're going to take away. So if you take away 30 empty spaces, then you're at 100% capacity, and now you want to add five businesses where those people are going to park. There's no overflow anywhere. There's, there's not, you know, there's field on the other side of the street behind. In front, there's the freeway, or rather, Balfour. And at 4:30, by the way, and 5:00 o'clock, Balfour, I directly observed that there's a lane on Balfour heading out on this side of the street that goes up onto the freeway, and it was packed full of cars. So there's, there's no circulation. If we close that off, it's no longer possible to drive a circle of any sort in that parking lot. You have to make a choice when you come in, are you going to go one way, are you going to go the other? If you make the wrong choice and there's no place to park, you're back out and you have to turn up and try to get into that traffic where they're trying to get up onto the freeway and then turn back and come back in. So I don't, I don't think there's much room there at all. And I don't like that, and again, conditions of approval, they are not something that stops when the owner leaves. They are forever, they go with the property. And to say that no business owner ever is going to want to open that restaurant for lunch, that's a beautiful facility, by the way, Vic Stewart's. People like going there, it's one of the, one of the nice places that we have in town. And again, one exit up, there's going to be office buildings, potentially thousands of people working there. And it would just be a shame if that restaurant couldn't open for lunch under those conditions. So, yeah, the hours, I'm not moved by that argument at all, because again, apparently you can have food in there. And Commissioner Brand, you had mentioned that certain operations are available by right. Would food service be one of those operations? No, okay. So they would have, they would have to get a CUP, all right.
Through the chair, yes, restaurants require a conditional use permit.
Okay, so there could never be another restaurant in there?
They would have to come back through for review and approval by the planning commission, and at that time, we could, the determination could be made if it's applicable or if they're able to do that or not.
It would seem unlikely if they, if they were asking for evening hours and the parking lot was full. Also, it would seem unlikely that a future business owner motivated to open for lunch trade would not come back here and ask for a revision on their condition of approval. So I think we're just creating a hazard, there's no space there, it doesn't make any sense. It destroys what little circulation you have in that parking lot. And I do think the parking lot's going to overflow, and there's no place for the overflow to go. There's just no, no place around there, you can't park on Balfour. You can't park on Eagle Rock. You can't park on John Muir Parkway. So where are people going to park if they can't park in the parking lot? No, I just, I just don't think it's going to work.
Commissioner?
I mean, I have concern of the parking. The one comment that I'd have, though, to your point of the limiting the hours now, I think the reason for that was to eliminate some of the used spaces during the lunchtime. And as the business owner, if he or she's choosing to go away from having his biz, his or her business open during those hours, that's his or her choice and the revenue that they're missing out on. So I'm not, to me, I'm almost not as worried about the hours, because if somebody, Mr. Harrington sells a property to someone else, then by right, they could come back to us and request to change hours with a different study to say, look, we've analyzed the parking throughout the day, those types of things. So again, I'm not overly thrilled about the parking, but just, I want to make my comment out that the hours themselves, I don't like the idea of, well, I don't, I wouldn't agree with the idea that, you know, limiting those hours to 4:00 to 2:00 or whatever it is proposed would be an issue to me, because by right, they can come back and request to open up for lunch if they see it's fit or they feel like there's, whatever, not enough activity in that area. I, again, I'm, I know it's going to be reduced. My biggest thing, I really don't think there's going to be an issue during the week. My concern is the weekends and just seeing that. I know that a lot of those businesses looking at the chart, again, if it's a nail salon or something like that, there might be a couple people using it on a Friday or Saturday night, and I don't, I don't know. Maybe Commissioner Roberts knows how late they're open, but, you know, how crowded they are at night, but I'm not sure on that. So like I said, my biggest thing is, is just as we have to take into account the total number on the weekends, I just wish I had a better feel for that.
Well, let me tell you what my concern is. I do frequent that plaza. When you come into that driveway off of Hanson, it's tight, and there've been almost, a lot of almost, with cars backing out of those spaces trying to turn around and find their way, exit off, exit off the property. So that's a bigger concern for me, is how tight it already is. So here's my question, or my ask, or recommendation, or however you would like to place this. I know that John Muir, and I've had to do this myself, their operations are oftentimes, that parking lot toward the back end is, is empty. And I'm wondering if there's an opportunity that Vic Stewart might consider if you're going to upgrade to valet, or if your, if your folks, I've had to park in John Muir and cross the street to come into your restaurant, if that's a consideration. Because there's plenty of parking over there on the back end. Nobody uses that back space over John Muir. I don't know if you've got an understanding with them, but it's certainly something to consider. And that would certainly help in the impacts that we're speaking to here. So just something to think about. Again, I don't want to, as Commissioner Floyd so eloquently put it, the cop stays with the property. And there's, once we make a ruling on this, it is what it is. So I'd like for us to consider perhaps some alternatives. And I'm more than willing to, if the commission is okay with it, bring the gentleman back up to have that discussion. If you'd like to come back up, that would be fine. Okay, what say you?
I think those comments are great. Chairperson Roberts, I think you brought up some good points. We actually were having that conversation earlier today about valet service on some of the times that it would be most impacted. Mr. Harrington is more than willing to reach out to John Muir Medical and other adjacent parcels to run valet service for the restaurant as needed. One of the great things about Mr. Harrington is that he's a hands-on owner. He's here, he's been in here since 2007, he frequences his own plaza quite a bit. You'll often see him in his own restaurant, at the bar, at the table. Feel free to walk up to him and say hi. It's one of the great things about having an owner, a developer, who cares about the who cares about the community. So all your points are very well taken. And we're more than willing to have those conversations with the adjacent parcels to alleviate some of those things. What you are talking about is really operational type of concerns and safety, obviously.
Yes.
And making sure that there is enough parking and that it's fluid and functional and safe. And so John being onsite and his grandson, who's going to be managing that property ongoing for the next generation, is also onsite as well. So those operational things will be taken care of, not necessarily because the city is telling us to, but because they want to. And they're here and they're seeing it. They're the eyes and the ears to monitor that, that parking if it does get too much, which is not a bad thing, you know, to have a full parking lot's not a bad thing. From a safety issue, you have to be careful, but you want thriving businesses. You want bookkeepers who are having, you know, fruitful businesses that want to be in town, that live here and want to work here. The spaces that we've delineated for Building E are small spaces, divided up into as much as four spaces. And so they're not large entities, to be least. So those are going to be the bookkeepers, the real estate agents, the mortgage lenders. They're not going to attract too much traffic. But in the case where there may be an event for the, for the restaurant and they anticipate parking loads that may approach or exceed the parking capacity, Mr. Harrington is more than willing to, to entertain valet options or other parking options. And just as, as a note, there are more and more patrons to Vic Stewarts that are using alternative forms of, of transportation, Uber and Lyft being two of them. There's many, many patrons at Vic Stewarts that are Ubering in and Ubering out. So they're patrons, but they're not necessarily using a parking space. They're Ubering in, they're being dropped off, they're maybe sitting and having lunch or, or maybe meeting up at the bar, watching the game or, or chatting with friends and then Ubering back. And so that's a win-win for everybody because you're really not taking up a parking load. So I want to just make a, make a mention of that, too, because that is a significant part of the, of the patronage at Vic Stewarts.
Commissioners?
Are there any crosswalks between John Muir and Vic Stewarts at that intersection? Which isn't really an intersection, it's just your driveway is on one side and your driveway is on the other.
Yes, there's one at the light, lit intersection on Balfour. At the front, the monument-facing side of Vic Stewarts, there's a, there's a lit intersection with the crosswalk.
Certainly, but that's not really by Vic Stewarts. I mean, a person would have to park over by John Muir, walk up to the light, cross, walk back.
No, no, not really. There's actually a pathway there. You may not see it, but there is a pathway that comes from that corner right into the restaurant.
Yep.
Yep.
Right, but they have to go up to the light to get to the crosswalk.
Yeah, but if they're parking closest to the intersection, away from the John Muir Medical offices, or actually closest to the, to the restaurant. So they would just have to cross that lit intersection, which has a crosswalk, and then go right to the, to the corner and then walk up. There's a, there's a pathway there that goes right into the entrance of Vic Stewart's restaurant.
All right.
If you had introduced a valet service, do you have a sense of what kind of demand that might bring forward? How much traffic that might alleviate as a result of, you know, a satellite parking lot, presumably, potentially across the street?
Yeah, I, I mean, valet service really is a parking, parking answer, right? You know, for small spaces. Having a valet service is, is a very easy way to mitigate a lot of the parking in the area and really escalate the kind of the, the level of service you're providing to the Vic Stewart's patrons, right? As, as Commissioner Floyd mentioned, it's a, it's a more upscale restaurant in town. It's one that, you know, that serves a great steak, you know, a great, great fish dinner, has a wonderful bar. Adding a valet, you know, as needed is, would be an easy, easy add for that service.
I don't have questions for the act plan, per se.
Yep. This is John Harrington. This is the owner of the Vic Stewart's Plaza.
I want to say a couple of things. You know, being in the restaurant business is, is really a tough business. You care about parking, but not nearly as much as I care about parking. We've been open for lunch for 12 years. It hasn't worked in Brentwood. In Walnut Creek, I was open for 24 years. It didn't work there either. The problem is Vic Stewarts is a high-end steakhouse. It's across the street from us, as the Commissioner Floyd knows, is Digger's Restaurant. And I eat lunch there a lot myself. It's jammed. It's a whole nother menu. It's a whole nother type lunch. Our average check at Vic Stewarts for lunch when we were open was about $20. You know, people lose interest at $20. We're not a lunch place. We're a dinner place. As far as the center goes, we have 13 tenants. It's 100% occupied. I've kept one space on the end open. It's 1,200 square feet. For a reason, we're doing storage there. I have a waiting list of eight people that want to come into the center. That's the reason that we've proposed this building. Now, who are we talking to? We're talking to people that are in the 1,000 to 1,500 square foot range. It's usually a mom and a pop or a wife who gets, who wants to get into business. We're not dealing with big-time tenants at the Vic Stewart's Plaza. I think our biggest space now is about 1,600 square feet. What you're doing by creating four more spaces with this new building would be bringing in, let me tell you who's on the list. There's a realtor, there is a hair salon, there is a insurance broker, there's a guy that wants to make his own liquor, which we probably will not take. Small businesses, people in your area that want to open their own place. So we're not dealing with a giant deal. So at Christmas time, and that's a very valid point, Christmas holidays, we do get a rush. It happens starting December 1st. In Walnut Creek, I operated in downtown Walnut Creek for, I think, 24 years with 22 parking places. And at Christmas, we used valet parking. It worked beautifully. They stack up the cars, they take your car when you come in and it's raining and you go in, you come out and you get your car. We care about parking. We do have a banquet room, for those of you, I hope all of you have been to Vic Stewarts because I thank you for doing it. We want to get the local people in there. We have a banquet room called the John Muir Room. And the John Muir does a lot of their banquets at our place. And they do park across the street. You can't count that in what you're considering tonight. But it is, it is parking that they use. There is a crosswalk at Balfour and the signal there. So in the end, what I'm looking to do is add 5,000 square feet, basically four, four tenants. We get a lot of call for people that want to be under that, maybe 500 square feet. So we're kind of a, a small business center. Your, your chill operation is open, but it's not open at night. You know, I, I've had them in there for 10 years now. We've been open 12 years at Vic Stewarts. We are not doing the tremendous amount of business that maybe I thought we would, but we're doing all right. It's a high-end steakhouse, dinner only. If they built the hospital next door, I hope you guys will approve that at some point with John Muir. I think it might up the business a little bit. But we are, we are what we are today. I'd like to put another 5,000-foot building. It will mirror a building that's already there. Tonight, we had dinner. Why do I want 4 o'clock? The employees come there for. And they come in, they check in, they shine the glasses, the silverware. I don't, we had dinner there tonight with Lance and my grandson. And I don't think anybody came in the place for dinner until 5:30. So you don't look at people pouring in there at 4 o'clock. Pretty much, the parking lot's empty at that point. And I say all this with 12 years' experience. We've been there 12 years. So I think it works. I hope that you will see your way to give us a shot to build the other building because I think it will add another four businesses to Brentwood. And gosh knows, we need them. And it'll be serving local residents of Brentwood. And I'm a big fan of Brentwood. And I appreciate your attention. If you have any questions about the restaurant business, it's a great place to eat, but don't get in the business.
Thank you.
Anybody want to ask anything, I'll sit down.
We good? Okay. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Okay, well, at this time, I am going to look to the commission for a, a vote, a motion?
We still have to talk about the design of the building.
Oh, we've got a design thing. I apologize. Sorry about that.
I can start with that one.
Okay.
That one, to me, is pretty easy. I, I like the building. I mean, I've read here in my notes, I really, I really like it. It blends well. A word that the past commissioner taught me, a lot of articulation in the building, you know, farm style. I, I don't really have any negative things to say about the building. I mean, where they're putting it, I, I see. I mean, there's, like I said, I asked Mr. Canal if you could move it. I didn't expect him to say yes at any way, shape, or point. I figured they put it there to maximize where it was going to be. But the overall design of the building, the, the color schemes and everything else matches everything in there. So from, from that standpoint, I personally don't, I don't see any issues with the current design as it is.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem with the way the building looks. It's, it looks like it matches the rest of it.
It does. Commissioner Brand?
Yep, concur. It's very consistent with the remainder of that shopping center and, you know, the character of Brentwood.
And I, for one, concur. It looks good. It was done very well. And so with that...
I guess part of the discussion I would have with the commission is I didn't think about the parking space across the street. And I don't know if it's something that can be conditioned or, or staff works with the applicant. That would certainly ease my mind, knowing that that space is available to go across the crosswalk. And I really, I didn't realize there was a little, and I think now that they say it, I think I remember seeing the path there, but now I realize what the path is for coming from the corner of the, of Balfour there and John Muir, to, to go into, into the restaurant or into the, I guess, the back end of it, whatever you want to call it. So I'm not quite sure how we, how we phrase that, but that would, that definitely would make me feel a lot more ease in terms of the overall parking, that if, whether, you know, obviously, they're, they want to be good stewards. They want to, they want this open and they want, the last thing they want to have is their, their tenants complain that their patrons don't have parking spaces. So to me, it's in their, their own self, you know, guidance that they would be doing that on their own. I just, from, from another standpoint, or a second layer from our standpoint, I'm trying to think if, how we could pose that or what we could try to request of the applicant to make sure that, you know, or see what the viability is of, of that parking space that's across the street.
Commissioner Floyd?
Sure. I'm not comforted very much at all by the, the alternative parking across the street. I think most people that come to that shopping center are going to come in that shopping center and turn in and try to park there. And what I see happening is they'll, they'll turn in, they'll try to park. They can't. There's no circulation anymore. It's bad enough people trying to just back out of a parking space. You know, things back up there. Now you'll have people trying to back out of the parking lot, get back over to the other side of the parking lot to see if there's another space over there. So I, I just don't see people on their way to Vic, sort of any business in that shopping center, saying, oh, I think I'll just go park over, or I'll try parking over by the hospital and walk across. Before they try the parking lot first. And I, I really see that parking lot as being a hazard, just the way it is. And again, you're taking out 30 spaces, which brings us to 100% usage at max usage. And then you're adding four businesses. I just, I can't pencil that out in my, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And as somebody who uses that parking lot, it just makes no sense to me at all. I can't, I can't fathom that this is going, is not going to be a hazard. And I don't really want to vote for something that's going to be a hazard in the future. And again, with all due respect to the applicant and to the owner, we are all mortal human beings. There's no guarantee any of us will be here tomorrow, but what will be here tomorrow is that building and that condition of approval. And there'll be a new planning commission. And who knows what's going to happen with it? My preference is to stay on the safe side. Leave it as it is. It's, it's fine. And we, we can improve it, but this would just make it so much worse than it already is. And I just, I don't, I just can't see it.
Commissioner Brand?
Of the, I mean, the discussion of a valet option definitely perks my ears because I feel like it's a win-win here because I see a high-end establishment that is, you know, seeing a demand for premium customers at a dinner hour. And then if that's the, customers typically demand a, a valet service in that kind of regard, I, I see that as a natural transition. How we go about doing that is, I'm, I'm unclear. And would, I don't know if staff might be able to give us guidance there and/or some discussion points, maybe, with respect to how, how we might negotiate this?
That being said, yeah, I think that, that's something that, it makes sense, for sure. It's not something out of the realm. Happens all the time. Going to San Francisco, you see that everywhere because parking is at a premium. If indeed, the applicant would yield to making that part of what we're discussing tonight and working through valet, we have an option, we have an alternative to use as opposed to not having that in place. That being said, I'd like to see the language go in with what it is we're discussing because it's going to happen. And I, I do know, I, like, I frequent this gentleman's restaurant. And not because the parking is an issue. I just don't want anyone dinging my car. So I prefer parking over John Muir and walking, but that's me. There are others that do the same. But I think that if it's put in the record that that is something that we expect the applicant to do, make it clear that they're offering valet, I think that that takes a little weight off of, the stress off of that parking lot. I don't know how to, to say that. And I look for guidance with staff or counsel.
Good evening. Through the chair, so I, I see a couple of options right now. One is the commission can approve the applications as requested and as drafted by staff with the findings and the conditions. Doesn't seem like the commission's too comfortable with doing that, so totally understood. The idea of parking off-site, essentially, so not on the actual property, is provided for in the municipal code in the parking chapter. So it's 17.620.020. And it does specify you can park off-site in limited circumstances. So it has to be within 300 feet of the site in question, which this is because it's literally across the street. But it does require an agreement to be entered into between, you know, both parties for the benefit of the city, and it basically runs with the land. Since we don't know if that's technically possible tonight, I would, and if that's the direction the commission would like to go, I would suggest that we continue the item until we can work with the applicant. The applicant can reach out to John Muir and see if it's even feasible. Because otherwise, just placing a condition saying that, that valet will work, well, nobody knows if it'll... nobody knows if it'll work. Where do the cars actually go? So that needs to be studied a little bit further if that's what the commission would like to do.
And with that being said, they would need to get the property ownership approval because we don't have that tonight either, so.
That's fair. Any more discussion on this?
No, I, I would feel more comfortable with that option, knowing that there's the additional parking that's available. I understand people can just go over there. But having that option, you know, and again, as you said, it, it would give you a more of a higher-end feel if they did offer that as a solution as well. So I know it might not be what the applicant wants, but I think if we did continue this to a date, I'm assuming would be uncertain. So that way, because I mean, they could, they could come to an agreement next week or it could be whatever. So if we did it to a date uncertain, at least that would give them ample time to, to try to come to a, you know, solution and then come back to us. It's kind of my, my line of thoughts.
Commissioner Brand?
Yeah, it's not ideal. In a perfect world, we'd make a decision tonight, but I concur with Commissioner Ziegler that it's definitely worth exploring and giving the opportunity to delight your customers that much more through a potential valet.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yeah, I think the whole thing is a terrible idea, but I think I've expressed that enough, so thank you.
Okay. All right, then. Well, I think that we have Commissioner Ziegler.
I would ask the chair to possibly ask Eric. I understand there's the CUP, but we also have a design review. Do we need to take any action on the design review without having resolution on the CUP? Through the chair.
Can we split it up?
Yeah, great question. They're all tied together, so we would just continue the item as a, as a package, basically. The other thing I wanted to just say real quickly, housekeeping issue for, since everybody's in person, when it comes time to vote on this item and subsequent items, you could just ask for, you know, the motion, the second, and then eyes and opposed, as opposed to doing a roll call vote. So we don't need to do the roll call vote since we're all here.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, at this time, I look for commission motion. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue Resolution twenty-three dash zero one six and Resolution twenty-three dash zero one seven to a date uncertain, allowing the applicant to look at alternative options for off-site parking, whether that be John Muir or wherever, potentially utilizing valet services.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Any?
No.
I have three and one. Motion passes. Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to continue on with our next item. The next item is a planning hearing to consider vesting tentative subdivision map and design review for ninety-four unit single-family projects known as Hanson Lane. Senior Planner Jennifer Hagan will present the staff report. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Chair and members of the commission. Tonight, we'll be presenting to you the Hanson Lane project. For this project, the city has utilized the help of a contract planner to assist with the project processing and management. And tonight, we'll be working with Kevin Valente from Rainy Planning and Management, who will take over the presentation from here for you tonight.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Planning Commission. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
All right, great. It's a pleasure to meet you. I'm going to share my screen here. Can everyone see that?
We can.
Okay, great. So my name is Kevin Valente. I'm a contract planner, working with the city on this project. I also have Angela DeRosa from my office here tonight, who will be available for any specific questions regarding the specifics on the environmental analysis for the proposed project. So tonight, we have a proposed ninety-four unit, single-family residential development for your review. The proposed project, we need the following approvals. Initial study slash mitigated negative declaration, the MMRP, which is a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan or program, the errata sheet, vesting tentative subdivision map, and design review. The nineteen point seven three acre project site is located on Hanson Lane, adjacent to Marsh Creek. The site has been disturbed by previous agriculture operations and is currently undeveloped and vacant. Surrounding land uses include existing single-family residential to the north, south, and west, and Marsh Creek to the east, with further the city's sewer plant or solid waste plant. The project site is currently designated residential low density in the city's general plan and is zoned PD dash seven one. That's Plan District seventy-one. And pursuant to the Brentwood Municipal Code, the intended primary use for the PD zone shock consists of detached, single-family residential, duets, parks, and open space uses. Here's the proposed plotting plan that shows the proposed residential lots, internal roadways, and open space along Marsh Creek. The land use designation for the property allows a density range of one point one to five dwelling units per gross acre. And the proposed project would result in a density of four point six seven dwelling units per acre. Consistent with the city's general plan and housing element, this development will help to provide a broad spectrum of housing types and community facilities with development occurring in a logical and orderly manner and contiguous with existing development. The proposed project would contribute twelve affordable housing units and eighty-two above-moderate housing units that are all anticipated to be counted toward the city's housing element requirements. As a result, the project qualifies for a density bonus, but is not seeking to develop above the density allowed. Rather, the applicant seeks concessions and waivers from certain city standards as allowed by the density bonus law, including the minimum lot sizes and front and side yard setbacks. The project is consistent with the remaining development standards for the PD district. The project also includes design review application for the proposed ninety-four homes. The proposed residences are aesthetically cohesive and consistent with design approaches identified in the city's residential design guidelines. Four home plans and four architectural styles are proposed for the ninety-four homes. It should be noted that the twelve affordable housing units throughout, would be located throughout the project site and will consist of the same floor plans and styles as the market rate units. The proposed project would include an open space area along Marsh Creek, which includes landscaping, sidewalks, and there would be new street trees planted throughout the site, including a variety of shrubs, ground cover, and grasses. Affordable housing, so the project application was deemed complete in January two thousand twenty-two and therefore is subject to the city's affordable housing ordinance that was in effect at that time. Though that ordinance requires the project to provide ten percent of total units as affordable units. The proposed project is proposing to provide twelve affordable units distributed throughout the project with five units reserved for very low-income households, four reserved for low income, and three reserved for moderate income. Therefore, the project meets the affordable requirements as required by the city and state. A CEQA analysis, the city prepared a mitigated negative declaration for this project in accordance with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. And several potential significant impacts are identified. However, mitigation measures are incorporated to reduce those impacts to less than significant levels. An errata sheet has been prepared for the ISM and D to provide consistency for the numbering of the proposed mitigation measures, meaning there was just some revisions done to the environmental document after it was posted for public comment. So there are just some consistency changes. The revisions did not result in any modifications to the conclusions of the IS and do not result in any significant new information. The City of Brentwood published a public hearing notice in the Brentwood Press and mailed it to all property owners within 300 feet of the site. The applicant also posted the project site with the required signage. Staff received no public comments during the CEQA public comment period, and one email was received prior to publication of the agenda report on the project. Staff is proposing a minor change to the vesting tentative map, condition of approval number six, related to the FEMA flood map. This revision is for clarification purposes only. And based on the information included in, in the staff report, staff is recommending the Brentwood Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving the MND, MMRP, and errata sheet, and adopt the resolution approving the vesting tentative subdivision map, and adopt the resolution approving the design review for the proposed ninety-four single-family homes. That concludes staff's presentation to the planning commission, and I can answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, does the planning commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
So the map that you just presented looks very different than the one that I have in the packet.
Me too.
Your map has a park. Mine does not. That's what I'm getting at.
Yes, I do believe the landscape plan within the presentation was a holdover from a previous iteration. But I do believe that the map itself, the plotting plan there was correct, as shown on the screen.
Yes, correct. My apologies. I, I see that now. So this is the, the current, what's proposed, what's in your packet, the master plotting plan. The landscape plan, which was included, is not accurate. That is an older plan. That is not what's being proposed. So my apologies to the commission.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, there was a proposed park and that it was removed?
That is correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Ziegler? Yeah, we're still on clarifying questions.
No, sorry. I, others, but going back to the park. So is it just, just to be clear, so I think originally there was a park. Then the proposal came back with a park the size, I think it was like point seven one acres. But when Parks and Rec reviewed this for this site, size site, they would have had to have had a park about just under one and a half acres, like one point four four. And so because of that reasoning that there wasn't enough space to do the park, that the Park and Recs slash city was okay with them doing in-lu fees. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, the in-lu fee is an option for all project development. In this case, based on the number of units proposed and the affordability levels, as well as the project proponent to add the trail improvements on the site, as well, staff was supportive of allowing them to pay the in-lu fee in this case.
And so when I'm looking at the different waivers and concessions, I, I think under the law, for the waivers, we can't apply any development standards. And then with that, I thought I read, I just wanted to point to clarification. Waivers do not count as concessions. So there's, there's no limit on the number of concessions that the applicant can request. Am I correct in that statement?
The opposite. They are allowed one concession and they are allowed an infinite number of waivers.
Okay. And this may be a question for staff or, and/or the applicant. I'm, I'm curious, when you look at the variety, I think it was section two point six one. I, I know we asked for four plans and four elevations, but this only, this has three plans with four elevations. Was there a reason why do we know of that it didn't include that?
Based on the final application submitted, there was four plans with four elevations.
So it's changed, okay. I think I read that.
Yeah, that was one of the revisions after the initial CEQA.
So there's four. I'm good for right now.
Okay. Commissioner Floyd?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Brand? Okay, I don't have any questions either. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Through the chair, I have several speakers' cards, as well as hands raised in Zoom. Our first speaker up is Melinda Ray.
Do we want to have the applicant go first?
Yeah, please have the applicant come forward.
Thank you. And through the chair, just to clarify, you have opened the public hearing at this point?
I will close the public hearing and.
Opening the public hearing at this point?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
And April, if you could please share my screen.
First time Jennifer wanted to hear from me in our years together now. Hi, good evening. Planning Commission Kevin Fryer for Meritage Homes. Thank you for the time to speak tonight. Excited to be here. I was looking this evening, or in preparation today for the meeting, and noticed that my first email internally on this project was in December of two thousand twenty, when we had internal approval to move forward with the process. And so while it's our first time here tonight, it feels like a long time in, in the making for us, so we're excited to be here. I think four different applications and a lot of, of staff effort from Jennifer, Kevin, Eric, and the team, so we're very appreciative of that. There's a couple of things that I just wanted to, to point out and clarify in a quick presentation for you guys to amplify on Kevin's proposal, our presentation tonight. So we have been dealing with, as you guys noted, I think, a complicated project. The staff report lays it out really, really well. Lots of moving parts and sort of competing issues here as we tried to navigate city policies, the general plan goals, state law, our internal direction. We think what we resulted, the, the final result is a great plan that we're excited about. A couple of things that were mentioned that were, that I wanted to highlight and want to make sure this is working. Let's see. It is not.
Excuse me one second, Jennifer. You said share your screen or do you want me to share the presentation screen? Yes.
Okay, so, okay, that's cool. That works. First was, we were talking about affordable housing a little bit. Kevin mentioned affordable. So city requirement, as you know, is ten percent of the ninety-four homes. In an effort to comply with density bonus law, we've actually increased the number of onsite affordable homes to twelve. And as mentioned, those are identical in appearance and size to the market rate homes, lot size and houses. So they will look and feel just like market rate homes. With twelve, we have five at very low. So there's two more very low than would otherwise be required under city ordinance. And so we're excited about that. The Meritage approach here on, on this project has always been looking to try to target first-time home buyers, small families, more attainable sort of housing by design. And so you'll see that both in the size of the lots and the homes. But that, that's an important part of our, of the approach here for the project, I think, is keeping in mind from an overall approach, trying to find an opportunity to widen the breadth of market that we're speaking to, attainable housing, and with an emphasis on affordability through the density bonus law provisions and city requirements. We spent quite a bit of time trying to, to figure out and address edge concerns, edge interests, and some of the amenities that we could provide in a site that was still general plan consistent and, and just below that, that density that's required or allowed under the general plan. So in the top left here, you've got a picture of existing Hanson Lane. So that's looking down, back up Hanson from the, the project site on the top left. Code that would be improved to public street standards, so curb and gutter that would be added there, as well as sidewalk on the project site. And then we've got a condition to try to work with property owners to extend sidewalk along Hanson back up into the neighborhood, which will be important as we start to talk about kind of general connectivity that's been a real focus for us. Top right, which has got the timer on there, you're looking down Lawn Tree at literally where the sidewalk ends and then where existing neighboring housing to the left there. So another edge condition that we've been working for to extend public street improvements on Lawn Tree down and pedestrian connectivity, bike connectivity, vehicular connectivity, which will be improved, all of which will lead us to the final picture on the left, which is the picture of the creek trail, that existing creek trail on the project side of Marsh Creek. As you can see, is an unimproved gravel trail currently. So the project. So, the project has agreed to make improvements to that trail along the project frontage to improve that to a 10-foot wide paved trail, and then extend those improvements about 1,500 feet down towards Homecoming Park. So, we have, the next slide shows kind of generally our location, big picture location. If we go to the next one pretty quickly, I think it's more helpful. So, highlighted is the project site. You can see the different trail lines there, and the trail that we're talking about extending, I think is more visible even on the next one, from, yep, thank you, from the edge of the project there, the southern edge, down to existing Homecoming Park and to the existing bridge over Marsh Creek. That allows us connectivity to Sunset Park and the existing trails there. So, it becomes a really key component in interconnectivity, both for pedestrian and bike traffic, from the existing neighborhood, as well as our proposed project. So, that, and we think that we're very, very happy and proud of this improvement, to add the connectivity through the project site, down Hanson, down Lone Tree, to an improved and enhanced trail experience along the creek, both with our landscape features. There are, while the larger park was removed, there are still some pedestrian enhanced features and some recreational activities along the project site, and then connect to this improved trail that we're extending all the way down to the existing bridge. I've got a few minutes left that I want to reserve for questions, but just wanted to sort of summarize by, again, thanking staff for all the time and effort for a very complicated and complex project. I'm sure there'll be several questions for us to work through together. Excited to bring you a project that furthers the city's goals that were laid out when the project was, property was annexed into the city, and general plan for housing. We hope that you agree that ultimately, the combination that we've arrived at is one that's worthy of your support this evening. I thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Ziegler?
I know I'll probably have more, but one of the questions I have, there were some additional conditions of approval that this city had placed, one in particular that I had just taken a note on, and I want to make sure that the applicant is okay with that, but part of the design review, because there's no corner lots, because a lot of the sides are being seen from multiple sides, for lack of better words, to make sure that there's some additional articulation that's going to be put on the sides of the homes and things like that. So, there was additional, several additional conditions that were put in there, it's making sure that you saw those and you agree with those.
Yeah, absolutely, yep. We worked with staff on that, yeah, you're right, sides and rears that were visible from public right-of-way. We'd agreed to enhance elevations beyond those that were in our submittal.
Commissioner Brand?
So, in just going through the map, I only saw seven BMR callouts.
Yeah, there's a, I was just beating my engineer about the face and neck for that sitting in the meeting. So, there was a mistake in, the plan got updated over time, the change in unit count and required affordable, and then our proposed affordable change, and I think we didn't note the BMRs on each of those. There is a condition that requires us to enter into an affordable housing agreement with the city where we would lay that out. The intention is, and our expectation is, that we would spread the 12 throughout the community, and again, that they would be varied in either plant size or location at least. And so, the details of that, we want to work out with staff prior to final map, but you're right, that there's a labeling error there on the number of affordable units. Apologize for that.
Right, and just a comment as well, I saw a number of them sort of around the, that cul-de-sac, no, not the cul-de-sac, yeah, the cul-de-sac there on Hanson Lane, Admiral Court, excuse me. It looked like you, there were a couple that were clumped in there. You know, we have relatively straightforward guidelines that say that the BMR-type homes need to be spread out across the subdivision, so just a comment there.
Fair enough, yeah, there are three in that polygon there around Admiral that I'm seeing right now of the 12, but I agree that the requirement and the intent is to spread them throughout the community.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
Commissioner Floyd?
I have no questions.
I have one question. So, I see that, and perhaps I overlooked something, but your retaining wall is four feet?
Maximum four feet, it varies in height, but it tops out at four feet along that western edge.
And that gives people enough privacy?
Yeah, so the way that the ultimate condition of the site would live is that the project site would sit below the existing adjacent neighbors. So, the retaining wall is a retaining wall with fence on top. So, from the neighbor's perspective, it's essentially a six-foot, brand-new-good-neighbor fence that would be just on the project side of their existing fence, if any. So, they could leave their fence in place, or maybe if they wanted to, take that down and then have the new fence that was constructed. So, the perspective from the project side would be in areas where you'd have the retaining wall with fence on top. From the adjacent neighbor side, you'd just be seeing the fence as if you had a six-foot good-neighbor fence.
Okay, that I was, yeah, okay, thanks for that explanation.
Sure.
All right then, well, that being said, yes, Commissioner.
Plans 44 and 45, I know this is completely accurate, but seemingly have a dual frontage as far as the Swallow Tail Court to Lone Tree Way. Are those going to be treated similarly to the remainder of homes that maybe also fall within the Swallow Tail Court there? Maybe like on the, I guess, that's the south side, south Swallow Tail versus the north?
Treated in what way?
Just as far as the articulation and everything that Commissioner Ziegler was describing. We have a handful of comments in our design guidelines referring to, you know, we typically try to avoid dual frontages and that sort of thing.
Got it.
I don't know if that's technically considered a dual frontage, maybe somebody can correct me there, but perceptually speaking, it seems as though it is.
So, the concern, Commissioner, would be that the homes that face one another across Swallow Court, Swallow Tail Court, same plan, and concern that those would look redundant? Is that the concern that you're trying to address? Or is it, is it front elevation relationship across the court from one another?
Yeah, rear side, the rear side to, well, I guess the north end, backing up against Lone Tree versus that of the court itself.
Got it, okay. Well, yeah, it seems to me that the condition would require 44 and 45 to adhere to the enhanced condition requirements because of the visibility from the right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, sir. Thank you so much.
Happy to come back up if there's anything that comes up that you'd like to hear from us on, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it, well, I have opened it up to the public, so I will yield to the administrator.
Melinda Ray?
So, I have several questions and concerns about the project. We live to, I guess it would be the south side of the property on Lone Tree. Our property ends at the very end of Lone Tree. My concern is, what's going to happen to the traffic? How are you guys going to prevent it from coming down our road, onto our property, and causing havoc for us? My other concern is, we are a ranch, we have horses, we have four generations that have gone through this ranch, and you build a new housing tract that provides people to complain about the smell, the noise, the flies, all the things that we're accustomed to having. Other concerns that I have is, there's already no maintenance on the creek. It hardly ever gets mowed, it hardly ever gets taken care of, there's trash in the creek, you're adding this housing tract, what is that going to do to the creek and all the animals and population and mammals that live in that creek? Who's going to maintain it and make sure that it's cleaned up? You guys talked about low-income housing in this housing tract, what about our safety and security as the neighbors there? We've all lived there for, I mean, I've been there my whole life, so 44 years. My family bought it a couple of years before I was born. I understand that there's changes and improvements the city wants to make, tax money, such and such, but I feel like there hasn't been enough conversation with the current residents and the thought process on what it's going to do to our lives and uproot everything that we know. Having that path on the creek road that he talks about, improving for trail use for all these new people that are coming, they're not just going to go off to the right-hand side and head down to Homecoming. You're going to have kids who come and disturb our property, who come and disturb our peace, going the other direction down the creek road. What's to stop them? What's to stop anybody from coming over to our property? What about our fence line that's facing this ugly housing tract now? I think that's pretty much all my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carol Gwynn.
My comments this evening have to do with Hanson Lane, and it was that picture that you had that was on the left side, that's looking up Hanson Lane from the creek. And you've talked to the neighbors, you said, but you haven't talked to us. We are the longest, the whole dirt part of Hanson Lane on the, on the south side is our five acres, except for the, except for the portion that we gave to the city to have the water wells. The rest of it is all our land. Not a problem. You're going to improve the road. If I understood it right, you're going to probably be putting sidewalks and curbs, gutters along Hanson Lane on the north side. I don't expect you to do that on the south side, we are not involved in the project, but I am concerned how you're going to mitigate having a street there, and are there going to be any protections for like water runoff? It's going to be a whole different, a different scenario now. You have blacktop, you have a road, that water coming down, you know, if we ever get another rain like we did this year, but it's no longer going to be sand, it's going to now be paved. So, my question is, are you considering mitigating the roadway as it intersects than what is currently a very rural parcel? And are there some, some things that you can do to make sure that we aren't the recipient of all of the runoff? And now it's a paved road with lots of cars, so we're not talking runoff that's just coming on dirt, now we're talking of runoff that may have toxic, you know, has oil or grease or whatever there is on the roadway. So, it's not, I would invite you to come and talk to us anytime about that. Our parcel is 222 Hanson Lane. We'd be delighted to sit down and talk to the developer, but at this point, we just have concerns, how that's going to get mitigated? How, how are we going to be able to still have our little hobby farm there, which now has kind of a nice vineyard, and a few small amounts of orchard that are all thriving? I just want to make sure that we're not going to receive, that we're going to get flooded, or that we're going to have something come onto our property that then we have to clean up. So, just a concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next we have Maria Sanchez.
Good evening, my name is Maria Sanchez, and I'm one of the homeowners on 8494 Long Tree. When they show the picture, my house, the entrance, it's on the right side. So, there's a lot of concerns that I also agree with, those that have come up and shared in regards to traffic control, it's very narrow there. There's no way that somebody could turn around without going into our property. I have three children under 10 who are out and about. I chose to purchase this home for privacy reasons. I wanted my children to learn how to love for an animal, care for an animal, become very good to the community, and to just be able to have our own privacy. There's just no way in Brentwood or in Oakley that I will be able to purchase a home at that price nowadays. There's a couple of concerns I have. Some of the signs, I noticed they had it on Hanson Lane, but they not put a sign up until a couple of months ago on Long Tree Way. The Hanson Lane had been signed up, had been over for a year, ours just went up about three months ago. I just received the letter last week, the letter was only in English, lots of those homeowners on the other side are second language. That's why you don't see families here this evening, that's why you don't see them here. I'm pretty sure they would have lots of concerns, because those homes, they're going to be looking at their backyard. With the trail and the fencing, I heard four-feet wall, one side would have wall and fence, I'm not sure what that looks like, but that there has to be, if this is something that's going to be done, there has to be a fence that divides us, just for security reasons, safety reasons. When I mentioned I have children, next door to me, there's other children, they're free, they walk around, my neighbors know them, they know to slow down, no cars go by there. This is going to change, with safety reasons. There's just no way of making sure that an accident doesn't happen. If it's going to be a street that's going to be now, a street that everybody's going to be commuting, that's going to bring concerns for me as well, just for safety reasons on my children. It's unfortunate that now the plans have changed, those documents, I look for them, I look for them to share with the neighbors, those planning documents are no longer online. They changed from having a park to no park. We're talking about low income, providing low-income opportunities for families. I just have lots of concerns of what that community is going to turn into. I just really hope that they consider, I also have animals, so same thing. I'm normal, I don't get grossed out with flies, I have animals, I have chickens, I have goats. I, it's just, this is our lifestyle, this is why we chose to purchase where we are now. I saw some of the income, what they're going to be selling those homes, I don't really think that's even realistic to what homes are costing right now. I don't, I don't see that, I don't know when that was updated, but I saw some of that documents, there's no homes that are under three anywhere. So, just I had a couple of concerns about what's been proposed today and how changes have been made, but we're not really out there for the community to know. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next we have Danny Dorman.
Okay. I'm glad I actually came tonight. I'll be honest, at first, I was thinking this is probably going to be one of the easier ones from a planning standpoint, you know, not overly crowded. The lot sizes are pretty spacious, it reminds me of where I live. And then I started listening to folks, particularly the young ranch owner. There will be complaints about the ranch. You'll have somebody who moved up here from Silicon Valley or from the city, and they'll complain, they'll come to the council, and they'll complain about the smell and the horsies and the flies and all that stuff. And it doesn't sound like that was taken into consideration. So, that's what I just came up with. What I was going to start with was no park. This is what happens, and Rod, I like you, I appreciate you, but this is what happens when people in planning who don't live here make recommendations. We used to be, it was, the only argument with park was what we were going to do with it. Now, we, we're sitting up here and we're watching... Now we, we're sitting up here and we're watching developers just eliminate a park. Eliminate a park. I don't know this area that well. And I hope somebody here can say, where is the nearest park relative to this new development? I'm willing to bet it's not that close. And then I have, and I hope you'll ask these questions. Um, Dave's not here, but, um, I call them the Shea questions. Fences and mailbox installations. As you may know, Shea charges $15,000 to install fencing at Kindred. They also, in the last six months, built a mailbox repository despite the fact that they had seniors living there for almost two years without mail service. Come to find out that Shea wasn't going to build that mail repository until they sold 50% of their homes. So looking at this, I'll be generous. You know, i- if they go with the Shea model, they won't even think about building mailboxes until 40 homes are sold. If they follow the Shea model. I think that's terrible. And don't even get me started with fences. Oh, boy. So hopefully you'll ask the questions and hopefully the answers are, yeah, we'll build the mailboxes. And we're gonna put, um, courtesy, privacy, good neighbor fences. And I'm also interested in lots as their design. 12 low-income housing units. Oh, and for the record, I make a pretty good living and I'm considered low-income. So, you know, I'm, I'm not so worried about what's considered low-income. I am interested in making sure that the changes or the design as is, don't all of a sudden come back with some ugly shortened, cheap material because it falls under, um, that designation. And again, I go back to that original statement. I moved to Brentwood. I remember the pig farm on Minnesota. I used to have a horse, uh, place on Apricot in Fairview. And I liked that stuff. And yes, you know, gotta be realistic. Those days are probably, um, coming to an end, but we still have people here. We still have people who've lived here for generations. And I think that if you guys can offer a continuance to let staff actually do their job and work with the developer and come up with something realistic. Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards from those in the audience that would like to speak. Would you like to speak, sir? Yes, why don't you go ahead and speak and then afterwards, please complete a card? Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dennis Brinkley. I'm Melinda Ray's father. I moved here in 1978 'cause my wife got disturbed with living in Mobile Home Park. Her father treated her like a princess. He says, "We're moving everybody." So we came out here to have peace and quiet. All right. In the past few years, things have gotten more and more worse for us. We've had drunks come down on our property and almost plow into parts of boats, house, car, whatever, get stuck in the fields. My daughter has a trimmed out, perfect field for her horses to make sure it's nice and soft for them. Almost drive down on her field. She spent money on that. We have been here to try to keep, have, have a nice, quiet life. And we've been here trying to do the best we can. Now, you turn out a building now from Hanson. When is Dwelly supposed to start their building? 'Cause they're coming in from the other side. They wanted to put Lone Tree through our houses and run it into over towards, over towards Dwelly's farm. So where do I stand now with all this, with me, my family? We're doing the best we can. So like, we gotta find out what we can do 'cause we're hearing about this stuff, just like they said, notice the sign up. We've been hearing, okay, they're gonna build. Now all of a sudden they gotta sign up. Which way they're bringing the road in? It looks like, I just now saw the map of what it looks like. There's three entrances into where Hanson is on our side of the road there, on the side of the property. Okay, people are gonna come down in there and they're gonna get lost. And they're gonna end up in our fields. And so, and we've already been, like I said, we've been having hassles with this a long time. And a Royal Seaco, when you come down that road, if you're not careful, you will get hit. 'Cause they come out of there not paying attention to their stop signs. They just come out and just drive out where they want. And I'm driving an F-250 truck, three-quarter ton. And that thing has got a lot of weight in it. And if I'm hauling a load and somebody gets in front of it, somebody dies. And I don't wanna be the person killing people. And this is why we're center trying to find out, what can we do now that you guys are coming in from both sides on us and taking everything that we got? Like I said, we've been there since 1978. So if, you know, I don't know what you're gonna come up with answers or what we can do for answers, but we need to do something because I'm there. The people that live next door to us, her husband just passed away about a year and a half ago. She's an elderly lady and she has her kids taking care of her. And they got their acreage there to take care of too. We've all enjoyed our privacy and quietness. And now you're taking it away. So need to figure out what we can do about that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Do I have anyone else in the audience that would like to speak before I move to Zoom? We'll go ahead and move to Zoom first. Zoom first speaker is Ansp. Go ahead.
Evening. Um, my family, like many of those other families and people that have spoken, have lived here for 27 years on Hanson Lane. My concern is the traffic, the infrastructure, the water usage, the fire department coverage, police, paramedics. On Hanson Lane, we have children anywhere from the age of six months right now up until 18 years old. It's just, we have cars that shoot down Hanson Lane as it is right now, knowing it's a dead end. They go down there, they turn around and they speed right back out. So, um, our concern is, you know, there's just a lot of kind of overflow that's gonna happen, um, a lot more traffic. I'm very concerned that you're taking the park out of the plans. Um, that puts a lot of overflow onto Homecoming Park. I don't think a lot of people are gonna take that path down to Homecoming Park. So I think another park, especially if they're all single-family homes. If this does happen to go through, I would suggest speed humps on Lone Tree and Hanson Lane, just for safety's sake. 'Cause I would not wanna see a child, um, get hit or anything. Um, along with the other neighbors around here, nobody came to talk to us. I don't know that anybody spoke to anybody around here. And the sign is so far down the road on Hanson Lane, it, we never would've noticed it if our neighbor hadn't have pointed it out. So thank goodness that they did. But, yeah, so that's, that's kind of our, our input here is, um, just a lot of safety issues and definitely overflow on the, on the Homecoming Park. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Cenziana Tador.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and everyone hear me like? Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, so I don't have a very scripted speech for tonight, so I'm just gonna, uh, go by my notes. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank Melinda, Carol, Maria, Dennis, Ann, and, uh, all the, uh, the other neighbors in that area for speaking and actually taking a position on this. This particular project is another brighter gate for East Brentwood. I want you to take note on that because, uh, this part of town is getting, it's getting the most heat. And we have the lowest income people living here, the most, um, minorities living here, and, um, the most disadvantaged groups living on the east side of the city. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but I just wanted to point that out. On top of that, you heard testimonies that people moved here for Brentwood. A yes vote on this particular project will destroy everything that Brentwood stands for. And what is stated on our, um, um, general plan goals, our, everything that Brentwood means. Really. And I, again, I apologize for my, you know, scattered, uh, idea, uh, mentions on this, on the speech. Also, bring the park back. This area, as, uh, Maria mentioned, we do not have parks. Also Danny Doorman brought this up. I really hope my neighborhood, we are on east side of Brentwood, we do not have a, 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 a neighborhood park. We gather. Every single person in the city staff knows my neighborhood, we're very active. We want a place to gather. We gather on asphalt several times a year. Do not do that to this community. If you're gonna say yes, you're gonna say yes to Sacramento. Because the, all they wanna do is pave everything clean and they don't care if people have a good quality of life and i- i- if they actually enjoy living here. So it's all on you to make a decision on this. We need parks. Brentwood is known for its parks. Everyone envies our parks. At least may, like approve and enforce the, to this ne- uh, neighborhood to have a park. A strip of some bushes does not constitute a gathering place for the community. Also, no conditions of approval. Your, um, uh, assistant city attorney who sits over there with her short hair very clearly said, "Conditions of approval are not enforced in any way." I have to enforce the conditions of approval on the, uh, construction site at the end of my street. That is not acceptable when I work full-time. And Mr. Ziegler, if you vote yes on this, I don't wanna see you in your pink shirt showing up in front of the city council and make a case against council members who actually fight and care about this community. I wanna make this very clear. I don't wanna see you there because seriously, that's war. And I wanna again make that, make that very, very clear. If you care about this community and this city, this particular project needs to be revised. Notifications need to be on point. Everyone speaking tonight did not get a notification. That is not acceptable. People live here for a reason.
The speaker's time has expired. Next, we have Michael Lazar. Mr. Lazar, you, there you go.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out. I'm old school. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'd come in, oh, back probably, uh, uh, yeah. So I'm Michael Lazar, 222 Hanson Lane. Uh, that was my sister Carol that was on last, uh, earlier. Um, my concerns are the fact that where's the construction traffic gonna come to this project? Unfortunately, I'm gonna hurt, uh, Longtree Way residents because it is a lighted intersection. Hanson Lane has no light and again, is a narrow street with cars parked on the street. And just myself have accidentally almost hit somebody because of the parked cars blocking their view. Uh, of course, I'm, you're looking at 98 homes, you're talking 200 cars relatively. 50, 50% of the cars are gonna come down Hanson Lane, go through Homecoming because you have the, uh, Arco Station there. They'll be coming from Brentwood, Livermore, uh, Stockton, wherever. And they're not gonna go to Longtree Way to the stoplight. Uh, and the other thing would be just the, um, egresses from the asphalt onto our property. Uh, again, the water mediation. When it was a dirt road, we had plenty of water coming into the property. Uh, now, like she said, it's gonna be contaminated possibly. So those are the big concerns of mine. Uh, sorry to Longtree Way. Um, but, uh, it is a paved road with lights and Hanson is a narrow street with parking on the side. So I think all this and true, we only had 19 days notice in a sense that this meeting was even gonna go on. Even though I knew the sign went up originally months ago, but it, it just said, "Oncoming meeting." So, anyway, okay, well, I gave Jennifer, I believe Jennifer, I had actually left her a note in person and she supposedly took this note from me, but I'm not hearing her say anything or I didn't, I haven't heard her go, "Well, we did have one resident say something." So I've taken it upon myself to try to do this whole new modern thing. So, uh, again, thank you council for listening to me. I hope you'll take all these people's concerns into, uh, you know, into consideration. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. At this time, I have no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all the comments. They all matter. I just want you to know that. All matter. At this point, I will, uh, close public comment. I'll make a motion to close it.
Second.
Do we want to allow the applicant to have the remainder of their time to respond to any of the comments?
I have quite a few questions for the applicant.
Okay.
Well, the applicant can come back up if the applicant so chooses. Okay.
Hi.
All right, very good.
Okay. So I thought maybe I'd start with the response to a few of the comments that we heard and then make myself available for additional questions. First off, there was some initial comments about adjacency and sort of protection from existing rural uses. And as a horse dad, those are specifically or particularly important to me. So I wanted to, to address that a little bit. So obviously, you know, I've worked on several projects like this across my career now where we have change, right? Where, where these projects represent change. And so 2006, the city annexes the property. They general plan designate it for residential. Eventually, over time, that sits and we get used to kind of the current condition. And over time, eventually someone comes forward and proposes a housing project. And as you guys have seen in, in, uh, the staff report, there's a series of, of state laws that really put cities, local jurisdictions, in a very tight box. That's their intention to try to, to create housing. And so for all, it's important to keep in mind that the people that sit in front of you tonight are not acting with 100% discretion and ability to just say no to projects that come in that are consistent with the city's general plan like this. There are very, uh, strong and powerful regulations. And so we look to try to develop a plan with some sensitivity and concern for the impacts of folks who are residents and have been here long-term. It's on us to do our job well and to be reasonable and listen and to try to look for ways to improve and tweak our project to limit the impacts of it on existing and surrounding citizens. So that's, that's our job now, as I understand it. That's, that's my role right now, I think. So a, a long Lone Tree coming down, it is a little bit of a funky entrance point. So, a, a Long Lone Tree coming down, it is a little bit of a funky entrance point, admittedly. We could bring the picture back up. But the street ends and there's a private access drive on the north side that serves some of the existing residences. What I think we can try to make sure together is that there is a visual barrier along the north side of Lone Tree, assuming that that's what everyone would like to see. The, the project assumes a small wall along that edge and/or an agreement to work with the, an effort to work with the neighbors to try to grade that out and flatten that out. That might be the worst approach, frankly. It might be best to try to ensure that there's a visual barrier there and a safety barrier that tries to at least limit the impact of new residents, kids playing, coming across the street and entering into an area that they may not be, shouldn't be, that's not safe for them to be. So I think we could work together to try to ensure an appropriate visual barrier on the, within our property, within the, the project site. But just on the north edge of the, the improved Lone Tree Way to ensure that there's a visual and safety barrier to prevent pedestrian activity across the street into the existing residences. Same with that, with that entryway, it is a little bit, like I said, it's a little bit funky and unique. So how do we make sure that, that it's clear that if you're coming, Lone Tree Way, to come into one of these houses or visit a friend here, that you're staying on the public street, the newly improved public street, and staying off of the private access drive? So I think, um, we can look for ways with staff to try to ensure a, a, a well-marked and safety-marked separation at that entrance point. Carol, thank you for your comments. I did talk to staff about some of the conversations that you had had with them. And so admittedly, let that sort of serve as, as our de facto interaction. But yes, the Hanson Lane improvements will ensure that all stormwater, that that runs off of the property and that that runs off of the improvements of Hanson, are captured and dealt with by the project and not an impact to your properties. That goes for all surrounding properties. The, the project is responsible for retaining stormwater that falls on it, managing that stormwater, cleaning that water, detaining that water, and ultimately releasing that water at pre-project flows into the storm drain system. And so, yes, the, the project is design engineering can nod their head or support that, that, to ensure that your project is, your property is not impacted by stormwater runoff and a change of condition from today to post-project conditions. Uh, let's see, I wanted to hit that. I'm not sure if there were other very specific issues. I can speak a little bit to the parks generally, and I imagine there's gonna be some questions about it. So I could wait for additional questions, or I can speak a little to the evolution of the site plan, if you'd like, and, and kind of what happened with the onsite park. Imagine that's something you'll wanna hear from me, but I can wait for.
Well, I would like to hear a couple of things from you. One, it was brought, and we have had this issue with previous developers. Are the mailboxes going to be part of this task or this development? That's really important. So I'd like that answered. And two, as it relates to the fence line, you'd communicated that when I asked that there is going to be a wall. It'll be elevated, I get that. But privacy is a big piece. Long Tree is a very busy street. When you talk about ninety-four, um, single-family homes and, and I don't know what the occupancy is gonna look like, we don't know, it's an unknown. But people are gonna want their privacy. That's really important. I, I see it's, it's not tight, tight, but it's close enough to where everybody is. It's neighborly, let's put it to you that way. So privacy is going to be a big piece for everyone. The people that you're building for and certainly the people that are already there. So that's something that I think we're gonna have to have a little more discussion about, make sure that that piece is handled because that gets in the way of people's comfort level and quality of living.
Agreed.
Okay?
Yep.
Um, mailboxes, you got anything to say about that?
Yeah, the, the process for mailboxes typically collaborative one during improvement plan and design drawing stage with the city and with postal service. Our expectation is that the postal service prefers and somewhat obligates gang mailboxes. I don't think you can get a certificate of occupancy without having mailboxes provided along the way. So you can't move into a home and not have a mailbox. So it would be our anticipation that we'd be building mailboxes as the project was constructed. I'm surprised to hear that there may have been issues with that in other communities. I'm not familiar with the detail of what happened there, but, um...
That's something that you're considering, though, making sure that...
Yeah, I think not only considering, but required to provide.
Yeah, it's kinda required to have a home and not have a mailbox.
Yeah, it would be our expectation that mailboxes would be provided and constructed along with the development of the homes.
Fine.
And that occupancies could not take place until appropriate mailbox services were in place.
I'm glad to hear that. That, that's fantastic. I'm glad. Uh, the water runoff mitigation piece, that's another piece that, I did some reading on this, and I am concerned. You did, it's just mentioned that you would take responsibility or the, the, the project would take responsibility, making sure that that water runoff, the toxins and all that that might come from that water runoff is something that you'd be monitoring, correct?
That's right. And Landscape Sheet L1 shows the bioretention areas that we're providing. What bioretention is referring to there is the stormwater runoff from streets, rooftops, et cetera, are, as gathered, collected, and piped to those bioretention areas. And those areas serve as required stormwater treatment. Decide to take the first flush of pollutants out. They also serve to sort of detain and slow down the discharge of water out into the storm drain system. So the onsite bioretention is sized, designed, and ultimately ensured through city engineering process to be adequate to, to handle the required storm flows for, for the project area.
Okay.
So treatment and then to ensure, again, that the stormwater system is receiving water in a pre-project condition.
Very good. Um, traffic, you, you've heard, and I, I was gonna mention it, but someone else beat me to it. That being said, two things. Traffic is gonna be an issue. There's no question about that. The road is the road, and unless we're getting ready to widen that road, which I don't think that, I saw that in the packet, we're going to pave the road, but the road is the road. So you've got quite a bit coming through there. I think my concern is going to be fire protection and safety, along with the cars that are already going to be coming in and out of that, that area. And how are we mitigating, is, is there a mitigation plan in place that you can point to me? I looked for it. I know that I, I was sharing with staff. I couldn't open up the link. So, so if you would indulge me.
You or I, Jennifer? I, I, I would just say initially that the standard process is when an application like this comes forward, it's circulated to all departments within the city for comment and review, including police and fire. And then any comments that they provided, which they've had opportunity to and provided throughout, are incorporated into project design and to conditions of approval to ensure adequate fire safety and appropriate fire response times for projects like this. And so, engineering and planning staff have been working with police and fire to ensure that they were, didn't have concerns about their ability to safely serve the project.
And, and that is, and that is the case?
That is correct. There is a traffic impact study that was included as part of the initial study, MND. And as part of that study, it analyzed ninety units as the estimated single-family project at that time. And overall, it indicated there would be approximately eight hundred overall daily trips. They think about sixty percent of those would go west on Lone Tree towards the freeway. Um, and the rest of the forty percent would disperse on Brentwood Boulevard, north and south. So overall, the Lone Tree Way exit would most likely have the majority of the traffic rather than Hanson Lane. But they did analyze that signal intersection. It is a signalized, four-way signalized intersection and indicated that based on the VMT as well as level of service, that the impacts would be less significant.
Yeah, okay, I'm just going to rest it for now. There is some more discussion, but I'll, I'll leave it up to the rest of commissioners to start to. Commissioner Ziegler.
One of the questions, you were surprised about mailboxes, but believe it or not, fencing. I'm assuming all the homes will have fences?
Yes.
Good neighbor fences?
Yes.
I think it was Ms. Gwynn had mentioned, like, comment. I, I, I think in reading through this, on Hanson, you're only, right now, putting a sidewalk on the north side? Or would it be on both sides of Hanson?
I think the section right now shows a sidewalk only proposed on the north side of our, of the Hanson Lane extension from, right now, there's existing, there's sidewalk on both sides of the street as you come down Hanson before it transitions from the current improvements into kind of the, where the improvements sort of stop, where the public street stops and the improvements sort of deteriorate as they head down into the project site. At this point, I think the requirement of the section that we're showing is for sidewalk on, on one side of Hanson. I'm not sure that there was adequate space. I can check with... Yeah, we're, we're showing it on, on, on the north side only. It could go on the south side, it could go on the north side. We just have room there without additional acquisition of, of right-of-way from neighboring property owners to provide the public street section with sidewalk on one side in that location.
Well, so I, I guess my question is, from that standpoint, the concern, I think it was Ms. Gwynn, was about the, you know, if, if you're putting on the north side, who knows if we're gonna have another rain like we had here a few months ago or whatever it was? You know, thinking about runoff onto the properties and things like that. How is that gonna be graded to, or what's gonna be done on the south side of that to, I don't say eliminate, but to mitigate any type of runoff into those property owners?
The curb and gutter would be built on, on the south side.
So there will be a curb and gutter, not necessarily a sidewalk itself?
Correct, correct. So curb and gutter, public street there, right? So there'd be storm drain inlets, and we'd build new storm drain infrastructure to handle that water. So it's, it would be an improved street, but there just isn't room for sidewalk on both sides of it.
Okay, I, I, for some reason, I thought it was curb on one side only. That's where I was a little concerned that there wasn't gonna be drainage and curbs on the south side.
I'm checking, I, I got that one right.
I'm seeing them shake their head, but I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, curb and gutter on both sides, sidewalk on one side.
I'll let the other commissioners.
Commissioner Floyd?
Um, sure. Did we talk about construction traffic yet? There was a question about where the construction traffic was gonna come in on Lone Tree or Hanson.
I don't, I don't remember seeing the question, but I don't know.
It was asked by the public, so...
Yeah, I would, all of you are interested? Yeah, understood, fair enough. I, I think, uh, don't know exactly the, how it would be allocated between, but my expectation would be that they'd, ultimately, there'd be access taken from both Hanson and Lone Tree during construction.
All right. This is probably more a question for staff, but apparently the notifications only went out in English. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, yeah, we... Okay. That's, that's not something that we can deal with here tonight, but it's just something I wanted to note. All right, and you had started to talk about the park, and I'm really disappointed. There's no park, so I wanna hear your explanation for why there is no park.
Sure. So over the iterations and the four different submittals, there, there have been parks. You saw one of them that was in the submittal or in the presentation from Rainey at one point. There was another park location previously proposed on, along the western edge of the property at the Hanson Lane entrance. That area of the site was an area that is impacted by the density, the transitional density policy of the city, so looking to try to ensure, we haven't talked about it much, but there's three large lots, lots one, two, and three in the, I get turned around on the map, sorry, but in the, in the southwest corner of the property. Those lots are adjacent to ranchettes or rural residential zoning. So those lot sizes require, under city policy, requires twenty thousand square foot minimum lots adjacent, or there's a couple other ways that you can satisfy the requirement. At one point, we had proposed a park in that location, but that location does not meet the density transition policy. A park is an act of use that doesn't satisfy that requirement. And so, we needed to relocate the property, or the park. At one point, we showed a slightly expanded park, and then we talked about some of the trade-offs and maybe the less palatable and, and easy-to-hear answer of an onsite park, not a requirement, but an option under, under city ordinance, would defeat our ability to, to develop the property within the top end of the general plan density. In fact, frankly, we looked at it, we'd have to look at even smaller, you know, smaller lots. Felt like it wasn't marketable, also felt like it wasn't a mandatory requirement. So focused some of the, the efforts into making sure we were compliant with the density transition policy. Offsite improvements to the trail and down to Homecoming Park, and then trying to amenitize that pedestrian corridor along the creek as best we could while still kind of meeting the objectives of the city in terms of the residential capacity of the project.
And just a quick follow-up question. If we could do something about the, the transition, would you be amenable to a park along one of those three large lots or two of them? I think two of them would be an acre.
I, I think, I think that if we didn't, at one point, we were amenable to the idea. I think if it was, if there was an opportunity not lose those residential lots, but, but replace them elsewhere in the project and, and provide onsite park, it'd be a possibility, yeah. I mean, the economics of the project at this point have been sort of built around the plan that we've been working on for the last several, several months with staff. And so, we'd have to look to how to kind of balance that off to, and, together. As long as we can continue to develop within the confines of the general plan and in a way that we think is economically viable, if there's a way to, to adjust that policy and provide park, we're certainly open to a discussion with staff about it.
Thank you.
So the concession that we've discussed here today relating to the midpoint density, right? RLD classifies the midpoint at three dwelling units per acre. I think that's correct. This project at the, this time is something like four point six, is that...
Yep, just under four seven, yeah.
Four point six seven, okay. My understanding is that the original selection for the distribution of the low-income housing sat for very low at two dwelling units. And that that was then bumped to five, which would effectively, if, if my math is right, by going from two to five, it increases your density up thirty homes from what it was, would have originally been.
Understood. You're talking about density, the application of density bonus law and the, and the density units. Yeah, so the, the application of the density bonus law in this project, what we worked with staff on was how this project was going to comply with density bonus law. Effectively, what that means is if you provide an adequate amount of onsite affordable housing, then you qualify for bonus units, which are units above that allowed by the general plan, without a general plan amendment, okay? And concessions and waivers, a number of which are determined by how you're complying with density bonus law. In this case, by providing five percent of the total units as very low, we apply, we qualify for density bonus law application. We had, however, have not used any of the bonus units. And again, that's, that's measured by the top end of the density allowed under the general plan. So five DU times the gross acreage of the site, you get to ninety-eight and change. So we're not requesting any bonus units, but we are requesting the application of concessions and waivers that are allowed under that law to ensure the ability of the project to develop consistent with the density allowed in the general plan. So it was through additional conversation with staff about whether or not simply satisfying the city's inclusionary zoning ordinance satisfied or qualified you for density bonus law protection. Ultimately, the decision was made to increase the number of very low units to five percent to ensure on its face compliance with density bonus law and not have an ongoing debate about whether or not simply complying with the city's ordinance complied with DBL. So we now have a project that mechanically and on its face qualifies for density bonus law coverage. And again, we're not using any of the units that are allowed under the law, but we are using a concession and waivers. The concession, as you referenced, was about the midpoint density policy. And I know there's some discussion about that in the staff report and about council's recent conversation about removing that policy as being violative of Housing Accountability Act and various state laws regarding housing. To clean that up and not be relying on sort of that discussion, we elected to just, though, though we don't think necessary, admittedly, we elected to just use the single concession available under our density bonus law to clearly concede and remove that midpoint density policy from applicability to the project.
It's helpful for the public to understand that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for explaining it so eloquently.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ziegler?
No, I asked some of my questions. I'm, I'm just looking at the overall tentative map. I, I see where Commissioner... I see where Commissioner Floyd's going with one of those larger lots. It would make sense if there's a way to transition.
Yeah.
I also look at, I don't know the size of the lot, so I'd have to, off the top of my head, I also look down the, I guess it would be the east side of the, of the, of the map, like lot 60, 59, somewhere in there, you've already got turf, the bio-retention there, and you've already got, you know, quasi-space in there built in, if there's a way to look at something down that direction for a park.
That is where we were at one point looking to expand the onsite amenity. We did try to retain something there so that there was, admittedly, it's not a large park space, but there's something of utility in that parcel B. That parcel B on the tentative map is a little tough to tell you exactly what that area is below lot 60 and above the bio-retention, because parcel B is a long parcel that includes the bio-retention, and it's, so the 73,000 on the tentative map, that's the size of parcel B, includes a wide area, a long area. But there is a, you know, a somewhat usable space there below lot 60 where we were trying to retain an onsite amenity, a gathering space, and we thought it was well-located adjacent to the bio-retention, which is basically like open space and well, you know, it's landscaped and has water in it occasionally, with pedestrian connectivity from there through the sidewalks. You see it out to the trail, so you've got this, you know, soft landscaped area, improving the trail to try to improve visual and, and sort of recreational opportunity along the trail, and then this gathering space there. The challenge that we worked with staff through on the idea of lots one, two, and three as park is a couple. One is, if the park were, were in that location, it was a larger park and it drew activity there, the concern was that it would be, and you mentioned you'd like to consider changing the policy, but that'd be more impactful on neighbors than would, you know, a single, a single residence. And that location, kind of long and linear, Parks Department didn't feel like was best served to be useful through the, for the community, for the proposed community, not centrally located in the site. And so we were challenged a little bit there with a couple of constraints for a park in that location.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand that east of lot 60, you said you're not sure, quite sure how big that space is?
I could, yeah, we could sort of guesstimate it for you. I mean, the lot, lot 60 itself is about 7,300 square feet. It looks to me like the portion of that area below lot 60, between the bio-retention and lot 60, is similar in size to that lot, so something in that range probably, 6,000 to 7,000, maybe a little bit more, depending on kind of where you measure from, Commissioner. Is there is connectivity below lot 59, where you've got the sidewalk, you've got then some landscape area, and we're calling it?
That's why I think, though, I mean, like I said, lot 59 and 60 would, I mean, that would be ideal, in my opinion, to look at a potential park space. Let's just say it right now.
Through the chair, just real quick, since the park issue is something that's obviously important to the community and the commission, I understand Mr. Frye is doing his best to explain from the developer's perspective. We do have the city's park manager here tonight in attendance, so if the commission wanted to hear from him in terms of how the park relates to this project specifically, and then, of course, in the vicinity, he'd be happy to do that.
Sure. And so before he comes on, so as you know, people are concerned about their quality of life. I'm a big proponent of it, and I'm looking at some of these more open spaces, we just talked about lot 60, I'm looking at lot 80 and 82, and that area, I'm looking at lot 88. I'm just wondering, would there be a consideration in, and I don't know, I'm just throwing this out there, there, there are some space here, maybe not big enough for a standardized park, but where there are areas for residents, as many as 94, to gather, because not everyone's going to utilize the trail. And so I'm just wondering, I'm looking at some spaces where you're not impacting, you wouldn't be setting up a standard park, but there are areas where there could be some green set up around some of these areas that might work for the residents within this, this, this development, because not having one really does put, well, just puts a residence in a situation where they've got to leave the development and go elsewhere. Is that something that would be considered? I'm looking at the backside of lot 80 and the backside of 82, and that little area, I'm also looking at the backside of 85, and then, of course, as Commissioner Ziegler spoke to lot 60 and 59, I'm looking at lot 46 and 44. I'm looking at spaces where there's some area there for some green. Is that something that could be considered?
Me first?
And in lieu of having a standardized park?
I think that I would answer your, your question with two responses, if I may. The specific lots that you, that you referenced, 80, 82, 85, are, they appear to be, have excess private yard space. They also exist on a cul-de-sac where they've got houses behind them, and so access to those areas, they're private lots with private fences surrounding them and houses on sort of all sides, so I'm not sure that they would serve well as a, as a park space, and I'm clearly open to let staff answer, I forgot they were here, I just like to talk a lot. And then I'd, I'd also like to take a second, as you probably guessed, I have several bosses here, to talk to them a little bit about one idea that's floating in my head that I'd rather not say into this thing.
Okay.
And you do have park staff here that can maybe help me a little bit?
All right.
Get a dry mouth.
Absolutely. I, I think while we're waiting on the gentleman to come forward, we're trying to figure out how we can put some green back into this development.
Good evening, Chairperson Roberts and Commission. Thank you, thank you, Eric. If I can help, facts and figures, I know there was a question earlier about distance of existing parks to this development. In our, in our 2019 Park Trails and Recreation Master Plan update, our consultant did a park gap survey analysis that essentially was a map, and I can provide that to anybody that, that wants it, just contact Aaron Wondon at the City of Brentwood. So the overhead map shows a radius of a quarter of a mile from every single park within the city. So if you take a quarter of a mile radius, and I have that on the plan, you can see that Sunset Park, now I know it's across the Marsh Creek, but Sunset Park is within a quarter mile of this project. Obviously Sunset Park is 39 acres with multiple sports, playgrounds, trails, and whatnot. Across the street from Sunset, also a quarter of a mile from this project, is the Dakota Park. Dakota Park is a roughly five-acre park with a trail around a detention basin, multiple grassy picnic areas for gatherings, as well as a dog park. Now, that's also the head trail for the McCollumee Trail that extends the entire city, that will take you into the newly-built pedestrian bridge over Highway 4 that takes residents right into Costco and Antioch. So that's within a quarter of a mile of this project. Also, Daytona Park, which is a 1.2-acre park across the street from Dakota, it, it has a play structure and turf area as well, a typical small neighborhood park. Now, the Homecoming Park that we've heard about, that's within a tenth of a mile of this project. It consists, it's a two-acre park, consists of a basketball court, a full swing set bay, as well as a play structure, and that's actually in our, excuse me, our playground replacement program for this coming spring, to have that playground fully redone. So that's going through the Park and Rec Commission actually as we speak. We have submittals from three different vendors, but I won't get into that. So we do have four parks within a quarter mile of this project, as well as the regional Marsh Creek Trail, which allows pedestrians, bicycles, rollerbladers, access from Oakley all the way to John Marsh House now. So you have access to Creekside Park, Veterans Park, numerous parks within the city. So I know these sites are off-site, but there is plenty of access for the would-be residents of this development. In addition, when we talk about our development impact fee, so if the developer builds the 1.4-acre park, they'll get park credit, we reimburse them, and the city does not get to keep that full development fee. But what we, what we, the city, use that development fee for is to construct the Sand Creek Sports Complex, which obviously has come in over budget, so we've got a budget to complete Phase 1 of the Sand Creek Sports Complex, but we're still looking at funding for Phase 2. So this would be a perfect example of where the city can take that development impact fee from those building permits, put it back into our park development fee program, and have future funding to complete projects such as Sand Creek Sports Complex. So just a little information there on why or why not build a park. In addition to what the developers proposing might not be technically considered a park, and they do not get park credit for it, it does beautify the project as well as adding this green belt. That's, that bio-retention, that's gonna stay green year-round. There's trees on the perimeter, there's that grassy area with benches, so from a park standpoint, it's a linear park, it's, it's a meandering trail through that and still provides beautification for the project. So from a park standpoint, it's not your traditional playground, sporting, but it is, it still does beautify the project. So hopefully that answers the questions on locations of existing parks and some of those issues.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Floyd?
I'd just like to ask a quick question. All those parks that you mentioned, so the children that live in this neighborhood of 94 houses, you expect them to walk a quarter mile to Sunset and then, what, play soccer? They, they need a playground, and I don't see one here. The, I don't know if the neighbors that mentioned this are still here, but already their property is being used as a de facto park. They've got people coming in and tearing the place up, and they're worried about the children from this, this neighborhood coming over and just using their yard as a de facto park. There's no park here. I don't see a park. I don't see something for children to use as a park, a playground. You know, I mean, there's, there's citywide parks, and then there's community parks, and I think what this neighborhood needs is a community park, it needs a place for the children to play. And I, I haven't heard you say anything yet that mitigates the fact that there's no playground in this neighborhood, and I guess that's more of a comment than a question. Thank you.
You know, we all know the general plan stipulates about five acres of park for every thousand residents, right? And if I'm just doing back-of-the-napkin math, right, we can probably estimate that this subdivision would have at least 250 people in it, maybe, maybe more, maybe less. You know, you figure there, that's what, one and a quarter acre of park? It's easy. I don't know how much more we're moving away from that five-acre estimate. Last time I saw it was like 3.7? I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head.
You're right there.
Okay, good. How much further away by putting 20 acres of homes with no park? Are we moving away from that?
We're always gonna be playing catch-up when we're trying to build parks. That's why we tried to build a park like the Sand Creek Sports Complex where we're gonna gain, you know, the 20 acres or, or what that, whatever that total acreage is for that project with, with one construction. So when we're building one-acre parks, we're not getting there as well, but we're always gonna be chasing that five acre per thousand. So it's a tough question to answer specifically, but we try, and we're trying to build the bigger parks to get there that much quicker.
Understood. And obviously, the, you know, Sand Creek Sports Complex is a massive undergo, project. The thing I have difficulty negotiating as of right now is this area seems to just have an absolute dearth of park space. You know, this vicinity around Brentwood Boulevard especially, and then when you consider as you go east of Brentwood Boulevard, it seems to be even worse. And I guess what I have a hard time digesting here is, why are we taking a potential park for an area that the developer said specifically is for first-time homebuyers? These are people that are in their late twenties and early thirties that are starting families, they have families. What do families need? They need parks. I can appreciate the negotiation of, we wanna put a couple, from every dozen, let's take an egg out and throw it in the big basket versus then just trying to break them all to, you know, make the, the park as-is, but I'm observing a gap here in terms of the appreciable park space on this side of town. I don't, I'm hearing a, maybe a disagreement from the Parks Department as far as that assessment goes. Is that, maybe you can help clarify that for me, at least?
I'm just giving facts and figures, I don't have an opinion. I'm just telling you what came to us, and we base our parks on that park gap analysis, and living within a quarter mile of a park is, is the general rule of thumb, and we've got four parks already within a quarter acre. Take it right or wrong or indifferent, that's, that's a fact. Homecoming is within a tenth of a mile. Again, I'm just giving facts and figures. We have a much bigger project that quite honestly is the city's strategic initiative number one, City Council's strategic initiative number one, and that's to build Sand Creek Sports Complex. We're deficient in funding, we need to find funding to do that. This is a perfect case of being able to at least get some funding to build that much bigger, community-needed, community-requested park of Sand Creek Sports Complex.
I also wanna make note here that I think when you reference .1 mile, you're saying as the crow flies, because you do it on a map and it's like a third of a mile, maybe even close, you know, from the southeast, southwest edge.
Absolutely, and the newly, assuming the trail gets constructed, gets you there that much quicker.
That much quicker, but as referenced, it's, you know, it's over a mile to, for a, you know, a person to walk to Sunset Park from there. Yeah, I mean, ish, but, you know, nearest makes no difference, but.
To that point, there's the, yeah, they'd have to go down to Homecoming Park and access the bridge to go over and get to that Marsh Creek Trail, which will take you to Sunset or take Sunset Road to get to Sunset. But yes, you're correct, to get to Sunset as the crow flies, that one's much quicker. Yes, exactly.
Sure, and, you know, as someone who has very small children, you know, walking a mile one way is hard enough, and going both ways? You better bring some formula, let me tell you. So, you know, it's a, it's just something to call out here, I think. I appreciate your level of specificity and fact-checking here. I think we're all interested here on this commission to ensure that the park space is a primary component of any residential neighborhood in this community. Thank you.
Commissioner Ziegler?
No.
Oh, yes, let the applicant come back. Thank you so much. Thank you for that presentation, sir.
All right, so I had this idea.
Oh, bring it.
Yeah, right, we'll see how it goes. Do we have sheet L1 available to bring up on the screen, please? I wanna reiterate the complicated sort of legal structure, legal environment that the park conversation operates within, and I appreciate Commissioner Brand's most recent remarks, because I think they're, they're well said, and. L1? Yeah, cool. So a couple things to remember. First of all, I think the idea of trying to modify or adjust the density transition policy is fraught with complexity and danger, and maybe it isn't the best location, especially if we're looking for a neighborhood-serving park to try to serve the 250-plus-or-minus residents of the project primarily, but also to provide a place of some sort of gathering or opportunity for, for rest or relaxation for those that are passing through along the trail. So, again, reiterate, so I think that the density transition policy renders lots one, two, and three incredibly complicated. We have. We have, uh, a policy, an approach here on a density bonus law project of a couple of layers of sort of legal armor that we're, we're trying to figure out how to appropriately protect the project, ensure its viability, ensure that we're developing within the density ranges of the general plan, concessions and waivers available to sort of say, we, we waive or concede this, an onsite park requirement. You've got a park ordinance that allows in lieu fees to, to be used. And obviously you've just heard about the benefit of some of those fees. All of that context said, the thing that I was talking to my guys about is Jennifer, where we show the existing open space area, the little, the little pocket park kind of area, we're shown just below it bio retention. And that bio retention is the long green linear. And what we were, I was thinking is that we could, uh, agree to a condition whereby we would work with planning and park staff and engineering to look to reconfigure the bio retention, lengthen the portion on the north side, the, the northern bio retention cell, lengthen on the southern side and, and separate the bio retention, the longer middle piece of bio retention contiguous to that existing open space area and look to expand the area of that open space or, or park area, that pocket park area. So that it's a little more useful and also directly connects to the trail. Right now, the bio retention sort of separates it from the trail. We show the, the pet connectivity there with the sidewalk that we're proposing, um, to the, to the north, but I think that we could work together with staff to try to expand and, and if we're successful, we could maybe take it from, it's hard to point and show, I want to, but as wide as we could get it, I, I think there's an opportunity to potentially take that six or 7,000 foot area and make it, you know, eight or 10,000 square feet, something like that, where it starts to feel like a little bit more of a gathering space for at least this community. It's not going to be, we're not going to propose it to be the, the park that you may envision here because of its impact on, on density and all the legal context that I just sort of laid out. But I do think there's an opportunity without impairing density while still protecting the Parks Department's direction and, and the desire to, for this project to contribute funds that can be used towards some of those larger park objectives and to create something a little more, you know, usable and, and substantive there, substantial there in that location. So that was the idea. But only subject to all of your, you know, loving that idea, I guess. Thinking that that's worth, worth doing.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yeah, I, I like the idea. Do you think there were? I'm sorry.
I said I do too. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I, I like that idea a lot. Would there be room to put, um, some playground equipment there for the children that are living in this neighborhood?
Let me check with the. One sec. I want to make sure I didn't make an enemy of my friend who had been working together for a few days here, a few years. Short answer is yes. Like to try to control the expectation of what that is, the cost of what that is. It's obviously a bit site constrained, so it's going to be something, but I think a condition that, that asked us to expand that area by reconfiguration of the bio retention and working with staff to try to amenitize it in appropriate fashion would be an acceptable condition.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Through the chair, just to be clear, so with that, I think you said it, I just wanted to make sure. Because it wouldn't be technically a park, there still would be the in lieu fees. We're just basically taking the bio retention and kind of opening it up and taking it farther down along that east side.
That's right. The, the treatment of that existing area would still apply to a slightly larger area yet, substantively larger, I shouldn't say slightly.
So if I understand that correctly, and it sounds great, we would be, we'd see the green, it'd be an area for your potential occupants to gather. And not a park per se, but an area where it looks large enough to where folks could gather, possible park benches and things like that. I, I, I would like to see the, the plans on that piece because as you see, we are all concerned about having a park for a development like this. So I think that that's a great start. That I for one am, am comfortable with, with that idea. Are there any more comments on, on this commissioners? Okay. All right. With that said, sir, thank you so much for working with us on this. And at this point in time.
I did want to just take a second to make sure that the initial discussion about trying to ensure that interface along the Lone Tree on the north edge, again, we, we talked a little bit about, want to make sure that there's, if there's a desire for a fence on the project's side, the project property on the north side of Lone Tree to try to ensure some of the concerns from neighbors that were expressed about sort of the.
Privacy.
The horse adjacencies, yeah, the ranch adjacencies. So want to make sure that that's still something that we're thinking about and open to. And I, I don't know if that's helpful or not, but.
Why don't you repeat that for the record again? I do know, I heard loud and clear what their concern was and the spillage of individuals coming onto their property. I also heard something about the maintenance of the creek. So help us put it in the record that that's something that they don't need to be concerned about.
Yeah, so creek maintenance stuff is on the county, right? So that one, I, that one I don't get to, to influence much. The, the, the other issue that I was speaking to was working with staff to ensure appropriate visual and safety barrier on the project property on the north side of Lone Tree and to ensure the design of the project entry creates is a, a clear delineation between the public street and entrance into the project and the private access road to the north of that, of that road.
There's someone in the audience that would like to, and I'm going to ask the commission to yield to the gentleman that would like to speak. Is that all right with you? Sir, if you allow him to speak, come to the podium, please.
My name is Brian Brinkley. My dad and my sister were talking earlier, but he was talking earlier about how they were going to be doing most of this stuff on their end of the property, on their property. But when you come down with Lone Tree on, as you're leaving our property and stuff and everybody else's, there's storm drains on the right-hand side, not on the left side, but on the right side. That means that in order for him to bring Lone Tree down and to bring those storm drains down, it's going to take minimum of 10 feet of everybody's property and chop that off. And then on top of that, our fence sits on top of a giant sand dune. That means he's going to want to level that whole property up. That means our fence is going to be impacted and lowered down. And he didn't know, he said that construction is going to be coming in from both roads. That's not true because in order for them to get that machinery down there, Lone Tree is the only way to do it because that's big enough to do it because they're going to need huge earth movers and they're going to need something so big that it won't get stuck in the sand. There's a lot of complications that's going to be involved in all that and it's going to tie up the road for months just to take and do that. And I don't know what you guys are going to do with all that sand. There's a ton of it because not a lot of people know this and everything, but a lot of the areas and everything where all this sand came from, that was a lot of waterlands. And I just wanted to, you know, ask what he's got planned to deal with all of that that's already been in place. Is he going to change the storm drain to the left side as you're leaving our property? Or is he going to try and come in there and offer everybody money, you know, and like the one, uh, one of our neighbors and everything who was already left because she had to leave, she's got barely anything left to give. So, I mean, she's going to be like right up there, her driveway is going to be like chopped in half.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much, sir. If you'd come back to the mic.
To the hot seat?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. The, uh, I appreciate the comment, checking with the project civil engineer. And I think the best way to summarize my response to the concern would be that the, the project as proposed is, is not requiring or assuming entrance into neighboring properties to construct the project. So the existing property line, the storm drain improvements, uh, the grading, street improvements, et cetera, are all intended to be constructed entirely on the, the project side. There's, should property owners want to meet and discuss and potentially cooperate with grading to try to, to change that, that Lone Tree Way, the north side of Lone Tree Way configuration, happy, happy to do that and will do that. I suspect that ultimately that would be more impactful than just having a barrier there that was, you know, a surveyed and staked property line that said, thou shall not cross, don't come here, build your project over on your property and stay off of our property if that's the approach. Totally understand and agree with it. And that would be the expectation of the project at this point, how it's been designed and that's our expectation at this point. We certainly, again, open to, to meet with the property owners to discuss that edge and how to best construct it with as little impact on them as possible. Happy to commit to that today and, and in condition as necessary. But it's, it is our understanding from our civil engineer that, that that's how the project's been done.
Okay, I understand that and I thank you so much for addressing the gentleman's question. I think unfortunately what has happened here is a lot of folks that should have been notified to speak amongst themselves before coming to the commission weren't notified timely or weren't notified at all in, in their own language. And so that kind of put them behind the eight ball in terms of trying to figure out exactly what all is going on. It's not your fault, certainly not their fault, but they do have concerns and it's a conversation that the commission will have with the city at some point in the very near future. But it kind of puts us in a, in a hot seat also because these are residents that for whatever the reasons were, weren't notified the way they should have been and quite a few of them, I might add. So I appreciate you putting yourself and your team in a position to have a conversation with the neighbors. I think that that's, that's, that's really key and it's important. That communication is key and it is what it is at this point in time. So I thank you so much for sharing that and, and, and addressing that gentleman's concern. That being said, are there any more questions from the commission? Commissioner Floyd?
Well, I have questions for staff, but I appreciate your.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Floyd.
Sure. One thing that I heard the residents talking about was that, you know, they have horses and other farming activities. And recently I became aware of the Brentwood right to farm. It's under 8.01 in the municipal code. And so I pulled it up here, so I'm sorry if anybody saw me not paying attention for a minute, but I was kind of pulling this up. And the right to farm basically says that if you're doing agricultural operations and people come in and they build a neighborhood next to you, they cannot complain about the noise. This is, this is a, an ordinance and I am not a lawyer. I'm sitting next to one and I don't represent the city. I, I'm here to make decisions about planning, but I just wanted to let you all know that if you go and look into Brentwood Municipal Code, there's something called the right to farm. It's section, it's chapter 8.01. And I just want to, um, under the definitions, I just want to point out that an agriculture operation is defined as including viticulture, horticulture, the raising of livestock, fur-bearing animals, fish or poultry, and any commercial agricultural practices. So my question to staff is if a person was raising horses, for whatever reason, would they be covered under the right to farm? Can they, can they continue without having to worry about this neighborhood coming in and complaining about them and getting them shut down? I, and I acknowledge this is a legal question, so I don't, I don't know if we can render an opinion tonight or not, but I'm just, if we can offer some assurances.
It was interesting you said it's a legal question because I was actually going to answer, but I'll do my best. So when staff gets questions like that on, just on a periodic basis, we actually have a chapter in the municipal code under zoning, under animal keeping. So we would refer to that. So presuming that that property was allowed to keep horses pursuant to the municipal code, that would, that would continue. Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem.
So I just wanted to point that out. For, for people that had concerns, that's something that you can definitely look into. And again, that's chapter 8.01 in the Brentwood Municipal Code.
Commissioner Flor, real quick. So in other words, Capadempor, if I'm buying a home and I'm next to folks that have horses, chickens, goats, whatever, that's what you deal with?
Yeah, that's what.
Okay. Thank you. The attorney's looking at me, so maybe I misspoke. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, this may be a question for Ms. Hagan, but I believe the properties immediately across Lone Tree Way are actually in the county, not within the city. Is that correct?
That is correct. If we are talking about the properties to the north, they are not in incorporated city of Brentwood. They are unincorporated Alameda County, Contra Costa County. The larger property on Hanson Lane 222 Hanson is within the city, but the properties on Lone Tree on the north side are not.
All right. So the, the unincorporated properties have nothing to fear from the city at all then?
Correct. We received, yeah, complaints, we would, we would refer them to, to the county.
All right, thank you. Moving on, uh, let's see. Somebody mentioned speed bumps on Lone Tree and Hanson, and this is not something I think that can be part of the project necessarily, but would it, would it be something that they could, once this thing gets put up and there's all the additional traffic, and there's going to be additional traffic, it's 94 homes, can't get around it. Would the city routinely do a traffic study or if the, the residents along those lines, lanes, uh, traffic had a request, would the city probably be able to do something about that?
That is correct, Commissioner Flor. The, once the project is built, there is always opportunity to make requests to the city as well as the city's traffic engineer to do periodic checks to make sure everything is going as smoothly as possible. And there is a warrant study that we could go through for considering, uh, traffic calming measures.
Yeah, I did hear one person say that Hanson Lane is already a racetrack by their house. So hopefully that person is listening and will, will reach out to the city staff and just call, call, call the city of Brentwood and ask to talk to somebody about the traffic by your house or use the Brentwood 24/7 app, which is something you put on your cell phone and contact the city that way. Let's see, what's next? Getting close to done here, I think. Right to farm, uh, speed bumps, fences, mailbox, sorry. And again, notifications for projects are currently going out only in English. Is that correct? And is that something that we could possibly bring forward to city council at some point in time?
Yeah, most likely that would need to be something that we would have to look back into our municipal code for currently. It's not something that's specifically written to provide it in other languages. So we would have to take a look at how the code is written.
Okay, well, we'll stick a pin in that one then. All right. And with that, I think I am done asking staff questions. Thank you.
And through the chair, just real quick, I'm sorry. And Commissioner Flor just touched on this a minute ago, but I just wanted to point out that this issue of notification does tend to come up periodically at meetings. And I just want to make sure everybody knows the commission, the public, people watching via Zoom, that staff did follow the protocol to properly notice this project. And that includes drawing a radius around the entire property with a 300-foot buffer and mailing notices to those property owners. The site is also posted with signage and then it's also posted, I'm sorry, published in the Brentwood press. So we, we follow those guidelines every time there's a public carrying on a project. So we did nothing different with this one. So we did nothing different with this one.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brad.
So I need to bring up the mitigated negative declaration. Some really, frankly, to me scary findings in there that, uh, I think deserve to be brought up. The PM 2.5 concentration measured at this, at this property. If I do some basic math, we found that, uh, the, uh, the study found that it's 46 times the BA double, B double A Q M D cumulative threshold of significance. Forty-six times. And the lion's share of this comes from the Antioch building materials facility, which is across Marsh Creek Road. I, it's called out as a threshold exceeding, uh, you know, obviously some of the other ones, I saw very little effect, uh, as far as, uh, uh, I don't think anything else actually found a significant impact. It says, uh, "In conjunction with other existing sources of TAC emissions could expose sensitive receptors to substantial concentrations of TACs." Therefore, the proposed project, Hanson Lane project, excuse me, initial study dated 31 April, oh, what, there's no 31, April 2023, could result in a potentially significant impact related to the exposure of sensitive receptors to substantial pollutant concentrations. The negative mitig, the, sorry, the mitigations listed mostly have to do with the small construction-based, uh, mitigations, which represent point 041 out of that hole, which, based on my math, is relatively insignificant. And it, I, based on what I can see, it doesn't really address all of it. And I don't see any meaningful way to address that number. You know, the next step here is, okay, well, these people are indoors, right? The report calls out specifically that you need MERV 13, you know, that's the rating on those filters, uh, to be changed substantially on a regular basis, which I think for most of us is quarterly, something like that. Even if you follow that schedule, it still exceeds that threshold of significance. That, this is all in the report. I can go on. The California, uh, Resources Board stipulates that, or mentioned specifically related to high concentrations of PM 2.5, which at a rate of 35, I believe, more, uh, sorry, 35, uh, as listed here, it's 36, but at 35, uh, long-term months to years, exposure to PM 2.5 has been linked to premature death, particularly in people who have chronic heart or lung diseases and reduced lung function growth in children. Now, I, I don't know why this was left out of the staff report, and I'd like to understand a bit more about what, what's to be done with this, this information. I'm surprised we hadn't talked about it yet. And, um, what other mitigations can potentially be done to address it? I don't know if the applicant can come back up here and discuss or maybe staff.
Staff, yeah. I also did some reading on that and there's a high rate of cases being, uh, conducted now on this same, uh, issue with, uh, prevalence of pathogenic airborne microorganisms originating, all kinds of, uh, what is indicated in this, some of the pieces that come back as significant gastrointestinal symptoms, uh, which is, um, something that is pretty common behind it. But I, I would just like to know from, for myself as well, um, how do we address this? Because it is something that it's, it's there. And, um, I just need to know how we're going to address it.
I'm gonna defer to our consultant team, Kevin and Angela, perhaps could help answer that.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Kevin Glente here, contract planner with Rainy Planning and Management. I have Angela DeRosa here, um, who's the air quality specialist, um, and who worked on the, the analysis. So I will defer to her on, on those questions.
Hi there. Good, uh, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Hope everybody can hear me okay. I'm Angela DeRosa with Rainy Planning and Management, and I'd be happy to answer some of those questions for you. I think the main point I would like to bring to your attention is that impacts of the existing environment on a project are not, um, under purview of CEQA. CEQA is very limited to the impacts of the project on the environment. And where there is an existing impact or issue, for example, related to health effects of other sources in an area, the, the analysis of air quality impacts or TAC emissions in this case are focused only on whether the project exacerbates that existing condition. So if you look at our analysis and the MND and the initial study mitigated negative declaration, there is a table and it provides an aggregate total health risk of all of the hazards in the vicinity of this project. Again, this is not required to be in a CEQA document. This is for disclosure purposes and to help planning commission and city council make an informative decision. But if you look at the table that is in MND, there are a number of existing sources of toxic air contaminants that are resulting in some PM 2.5 concentrations. And the only thing that this proposed project is contributing to that existing condition is associated with the construction emissions, which are very short term. And that contribution is very small compared to the existing conditions that are already happening in this location. So that, that is the reason there aren't mitigation measures pursuant to CEQA in the MND, because this is not a CEQA concern, it's more of a planning concern. We do provide in the study that there are options for potentially reducing the emissions at the project site, such as requiring as conditions of approval for their analysis once, um, plans are further along or requiring, um, higher level filters at the residences on the site. But unfortunately, there's no, there's nothing we can require for this project to implement any kind of, um, measures on any of the existing sources that are more of the issue here.
I'm just so I understand. So I think if I'm understanding correctly, the, it says therefore, "A site-specific analysis performed by a qualified air quality specialist using dispersion modeling is recommended to more accurately estimate health risk impacts at the project site." As previously discussed, is this analysis of existing sources of TACs was included for informational purposes, as you described. I'd, I'd imagine that that's something at our discretion as, as an ask, to be able to get us a better sense of what the true health risks impact, true health risk impacts are. I'd also like to understand where that liability falls.
Yeah. Does it fall on the city? Does it fall on developer?
Yeah. Echo the chair. Does it fall on the developer? Does it fall on the city? Cause it's, I mean, it's clearly written in the report and presumably if I'm a home buyer, I would have to sign some piece of paper that indicates that there is this level of, of this toxicity. Is that, I, I, I don't know the answer to that question. That's why I'm asking.
So that is not an issue for which the city would bear liability? If that helps.
Okay. Just a quick follow-up. So, um, when we were talking pathogens, I think we're talking about, um, that valley fever fungus that can get kicked up in the dust in agricultural areas. I believe it does come as far north. So I guess the question is, um, is the site examined for, um, these types of risks? And, um, since it's going to be a construction site, there will be dust kicked up as they move the land around. And, and, um, is there, uh, any analysis done that says it's safe to be doing construction here? Or, um, will the construction itself create a hazard? I mean, simple particulate matter is not good, but, um, if it's toxic in any way or pathogenic, there could be a, a potential for, um, construction to cause that to go up into the air and infect other people.
I believe the valley fever was discussed in the mitigated deck, but I'll refer back to the CEQA consultants because it was their work that analyzed that.
Yeah, I can give a quick answer on that. Valley fever was considered, uh, there was a discussion of it. And like you say, during construction, there would be some dust, of course. So there is a mitigation measure in the MND that requires, um, an erosion prevention and dust control plan that the city will reveal, which should be, which would be sufficient to reduce any dust associated with the project.
Uh, thank you for that.
Commissioner Brad? Commissioner Ziegler?
I mean, from my perspective, I would love to see this dispersion modeling report be done, just so that we can better understand what the health risks are for potential future residents. I just, that number just jumped out at me as just astronomically high and I can't, I, I can't ignore it. And, uh, I think that if we are inviting people to live in our city or at least move around in our city, they should be aware of what's around them, particularly if it's in your home, your front yard, your backyard, any of the above. And it's, it's, it's too significant to ignore.
So I guess my question is, because it is significant and we have knowledge of it and we've, we've, uh, put it in the record and the city has communicated that they would not be liable. I just need to understand, because I know this might go before city council. I just need to know, how do we, um, ensure potential occupants are in a safe place? It's a beautiful place, but safety is, is key, especially with this commission, it's key. I don't know how we ensure that, if we can even ensure that, but with numbers like that, it's, it's something to, we can't ignore. So I'm looking at coun, I'm looking for council to kind of direct us on how do we, how do we address this? Cause it's out there.
In reviewing the IS MND, it does contemplate the possibility of a dispersion model report being conducted. So certainly that is something you could talk to the applicant about and you could consider amongst yourselves. Staff would probably want to have a conversation amongst ourselves if we were going to change conditions, for example, but, um, you're welcome to bring the issue up with the applicant.
Changing my name to applicant.
Yeah, your name is applicant.
Waking up in the middle of the night.
Please, um, help us with this.
Here's another fun one. Yeah, so, uh, another difficult one and, and the technically correct and somewhat unsatisfying answer, I know, to hear that CEQA analyzes the effects of the project on the environment, not the environment on the project. And so you're left with information that you say, what do we do with this? And is this okay? You've got an existing condition that's not something that the project's creating. It's not specific to the project only. It's a, it's a, it's a condition that exists in the area and so we need to be aware of it and so do future home buyers, I think is probably the only answer. And that is conduct the additional analysis that's required and it's mentioned. All that we can do is to do that analysis and then to disclose that information to future home buyers so they can make an informed decision about whether they share the concern that, that's raised this evening about, uh, the impact of living there. The Meritage Homes is, uh, multi, multi-time winner of green and enviro-friendly award, uh, as a, as a green builder. So they're, they're happy to include and do include the enhanced filtration that's, that's referenced. Beyond that, I think we're in a situation here where we essentially have to allow, to ensure that home buyers are making informed decisions about the area that they're living in.
Appreciate that.
And, and I think city attorney spoke to the city's liability and, and obviously home, home builder is, is thinking from that same lens and, and disclosure and making informed decisions is about all we can do.
I appreciate that. Any further discussion? Commissioner Brad?
City council review document on the March 14th about in, within the housing element. And it called up this healthy places index in Brentwood. And effectively the whole northeast corner of the city falls at a, at a health index lower than the remainder of the city. This, this area happens to fall within that as well. And I just, I think it's important to call out, and I commented on this earlier, is that, um, we don't want to forget about our residents on the east side of town, you know, the northeast portion of District Two. It's important that they are given and are provided the opportunity no differently than the remainder of our residents in the remainder of our city. And we want to give them that opportunity. And so I want to leverage any tool at my discretion to be able to ensure that that takes place, whether, you know, to ensure that they have a, a, a fully informed decision to make when, you know, they may have an opportunity to buy a home or in the position in which the home resides or, um, I think it's just, I want to make sure we speak for those, those residents as well. So just food for thought.
I think that's well said and I think that you're, you've identified, there's two things there. You identify the constraints within which you can, you're operating under the law and then ensuring that there's adequate disclosure and information available so that people are making informed decision.
Through the chair, um, and I appreciate everything you've done so far tonight. So, um, I know it hasn't been easy. So just to, to understand, yes, we're operating within the law and the purview of what we can do as a city and the planning commission, but I don't know that there's anything in it, in terms of conditions. I guess it's in good faith, we know that the builder was going to be disclosing. Is that the way I'm understanding how this is going right now? We can't condition them to disclose stuff to the built, to the, to the buyer, but I believe, I don't know that we can. I'm looking at the attorney and I'm kind of going back and forth versus we're just taking a good faith that they're going to do that. I know we've had not this, we've had some situations in the past, I'll just say that, where things have been said and if it hasn't been solidified or etched in stone, it may or may not have happened. So the city attorney's looking at me.
I actually think the planning commission would be within its purview to require a condition of approval to be included whereby the applicant would be required to conduct or engage a qualified air quality specialist to conduct a site-specific analysis using dispersion modeling and provide the results of that analysis to potential home buyers within the project prior to their purchase. And then they have full disclosure and so they're aware of what they're purchasing.
That's satisfactory, Commissioner Brad. Is that your question, not mine?
Or just give them the thousand page. Or just give them the thousand page book as well, and, you know, highlight it. I do, I do have one question. It calls out here specifically that, as with concessions, the city is not required to waive or reduce development standards that would have a specific adverse impact on public health slash safety. My understanding, based off of the consultant, is that the property itself as being added to the city would have to constitute the public safety or health issue, as opposed to adding a resident that would then encounter that level of potential health slash safety. Is that, is that an accurate interpretation?
I think I follow your question. So you're talking about the conditions under which the city could refuse to grant a concession or a waiver that would otherwise be required under the density bonus law. In both of those instances, what you're looking at is relief from an existing city standard that would otherwise require something. And I just, as I sit here tonight and talk to the planning manager, I'm not identifying a particular city standard that they would be seeking relief from. We don't have a particular local threshold in this regard, and this area has been zoned and general plan land use designated for residential development. So I'm, I'm not aware of anything that they would be seeking relief from, that a concession or waiver would apply to in this context.
Understood, okay.
Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns?
While the commission is thinking about that, over here, sorry. I just wanted to make one quick, one quick clarification, because, and I don't remember who it was, but somebody made mention about the item going to the council. And this, again, happens periodically at meetings and with different items, because it does depend, but the way this item, the nature of this item and the way it's structured, the planning commission does have authority to approve it. So the three resolutions that are attached in draft form, one is for the CEQA document, one is for the map, one is for the design review, those are all set up for the commission to adopt and approve the project. Just want to make sure everybody was clear on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Through the chair, and this is to the, to the, to staff. So some of the things that we've talked about, as, as, in this scenario, if we talked about doing the air quality analysis and, and setting up a condition to disclose that, that would fall under Resolution 23029? Or which resolution would that fall under?
Would it be 2309? The mitigation?
The mitigated declaration.
So I would actually propose that a revised condition of that sort, or a new condition of that sort, be added to the map resolution, because as was noted, this isn't a CEQA issue, it's not an effect of the project on the environment, it's an effect of the environment on the project. So it wouldn't be on the CEQA reso, it would be on the map resolution.
23030. And then the same line of question, in talking about the condition to move and reconfigure the buyer retention, that would also go under the tentative map as well? 23030?
Yes, I would put it there, but if you would entertain a few-minute recess, perhaps, we do have the Director of Engineering here with us tonight, and it would perhaps be helpful if we could speak with him to craft a condition of approval, addressing that buyer retention relocation, just to make sure we're doing it in a way that makes some practical sense, and isn't just your attorney coming up with it on the fly.
And my last one, sorry. We talked about the north side of Longtree, and helping reduce visual and safety effects there. Again, would that fall under the tentative mapping, or under, I would assume, under 23030 as well?
So for that, we'd actually recommend that be added to the design review resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just point of clarity, thank you.
Thank you. So, and if the commission is willing to consider a very brief recess for staff to consult with one another, we can come up with a couple of new conditions or revised conditions, and put them on the screen, so that you can see what they would look like.
Very good. Then at this time, we will go into recess for five minutes. For 10 minutes. And thank you so much for indulging us. It's a pretty important subject matter, so thank you again. At this time, I'm going to ask the applicant to step forward, please, and thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay. What say you? I, I think that we've got some conditions that I'll look to council to help me narrate, narrate this.
Through the chair, so over the break, staff convened to discuss a few potential additional conditions of approval for your consideration tonight. April, if you'd like to share my screen. We can make that a lot bigger.
I would like to ask about the word potential on that place structure. I kind of want the place structure.
So my understanding was that staff and the applicant were going, the commission wished the staff and the applicant to work together. the commission wished the staff and the applicant to work together to determine if that area could be reconfigured for a more useful gathering space. And in moving or reconfiguring the bio-retention area, they were going to have to determine how much could be moved and where it could be shifted, such as to make room and just see if there was room for equipment out there. If I'm not capturing it correctly, let me know.
That wasn't really my intent. Was that somebody else's intent?
I believe that we were considering, and I think the applicant was working with us to, we weren't looking for a park, but we were looking for a nice green space where people could gather. And we were hoping to put some, I've mentioned benches, but someplace where people could actually gather. Not just green, but that there was, it's an area where residents in that community could gather. And when I think of gathering, I think of benches, things of that nature.
I did specifically say that I wanted a playground.
Yeah, well, I don't, okay, sure.
And I think there needs just to be some equipment there for the kids, just so they don't have to, I mean, little kids shouldn't have to go, you know, a quarter mile on foot to get on a swing set.
Could it be worded, I know what you're saying, and I think with the applicant amenable to trying to do something there, but not necessarily a grandiose play structure, per se. So, we could word it in the sense that there would be, whether, I don't want to say "design review", or amenable to, between the applicant and the city, to finalize that. I mean, that's putting your trust in the city to say, understanding what your intent is of some sort of play equipment of some sort. Again, not having something large based on the size, obviously. But I'm thinking if we could word something that way, would you be amenable to that?
Something like that. Actually, design review committee is fine with me if you want to just sit down and hash it out with the, you know, once staff has some recommendations as to what might fit there.
Yeah, I think you're looking for language that's flexible enough to try to capture the intent, but also provides for the possibility that once we look at what can be done with the movement of the bio-retention to try to maximize that space, that I think you're right, that the word "structure" or seems maybe larger and cost impactful than we're anticipating, but some sort of, so maybe it's just gathering space and play equipment. And we take "structure" off, sounds like a bigger thing.
Yeah.
But I think we're okay with the intention to try to ensure that there's gathering, as well as an opportunity for some sort of play equipment in that area. We're just trying to kind of control the scope and scale of it.
Play equipment sounds appropriate.
I'm okay with play equipment. I think that captures the intent.
I just want to make sure there's something there.
Agreed.
Are we saying that that's going to design review? Or is that something we're iterating here?
No, well, at first, he said they can discuss and come back, but I think if we put that verbiage in there, then I think we're okay.
Yeah. Gathering space and play equipment. I think that that's perfect.
Yeah, it's just, you know, two-swing swing set from Walmart.
Yeah, and it's also, it's also not going to be a zip line across the marsh creek from the project site with a trampoline that you can send your kids directly to Sunset Park from the project site, too, so you don't have to pack more formula.
Fair enough.
Okay. Okay. Well, that being said.
All right, so we've got, what do we got there? We've got two to be added to the TMAP rezo. So, we've got, "Permitted to show engage a qualified air quality specialist to conduct science research, PM2, and site's person modeling and results of this analysis shall be provided home buyers from the project prior to purchase." Agreed. "Permitted to show work with staff to reconfigure the bio-retention areas, maximize open space, and as we just did." Agreed. "Permitted to show work with staff to develop and provide a visual on safety barrier in northern property line of project satisfaction, city engineer, director of community development." Agreed. "Permitted to show work with city staff and project entry details to include delineation of private-public access along treated satisfaction city engineer." Agreed. All of those conditions, as proposed, are acceptable to applicant.
Commissioner Brand?
Sorry, quick question. Maybe it's clarifying. Is this bio-retention area that's an open space, if we are able to implement a gathering space and play equipment, is it plausible that at a future date, it could be classified as a Brentwood Park? With a name and a placard and all of that? If it sits here now, maybe at a future date, oh, yeah. Just the man for the answer.
Absolutely. I'll address that. Thank you. Yes, for our purposes, as far as operations, we would need to have a name. So, the park naming, we've got roughly 15 pocket parks within the city that don't get park credit, but they're considered parks, pocket parks. So, we have them all named. They don't receive a monument sign, but we're looking at putting some site, some sort of sign on the pocket parks. And that's what this one would include.
Okay.
Because we're all talking about a park without saying "park", but he said it clearly.
Thank you.
Call it "applicant park".
There, there you go.
Sorry. It's getting late. You know what happens.
Okay. Okay, so, all right. I think that we're in a position now to entertain a motion.
We still have design review.
Design review. Yeah, that's true. Okay.
By the way, I'm pretty sure my architect has been on this whole time waiting for that portion. No, I'll start briefly. I mean, I may have a few additional questions, but I did like, and I mentioned it there earlier, when the applicant came up, and they agreed to some of the conditions that were put forth, because one of the things that I looked at, knowing that they are, they're all two-story. So, if all the fence line was going to be seen, you know, in terms of corner lots and things like that, that one of the conditions of approval was to continue the, some of that articulation and such around the backs and sides of all the units. That was my biggest concern when I looked at the overall designs. I think the designs look very nice. There's a good variety there, different floor plans, different elevations. Like I said, my biggest concern was that articulation all the way around when it's being seen, whether it's from Lone Tree or whatnot, from, you know, up against a road behind you and such. So, I may have a few more comments, but I just want to make sure that, from my standpoint, at first glance, knowing that condition's in there, I like the designs as presented.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yeah, I like the designs. Appreciate the selection of tile roofing. I had a couple of questions for staff. There's no single-story units and no side-loaded garages in this project. There are design guidelines for those things. I'm just curious. I know I've asked a lot of weird questions about design guidelines before.
I think that's under the SB 30. It's one of the waivers that they requested.
Oh, it's a waiver. Perfect.
Because one of the setbacks was normally supposed to be 15 feet. This is 12, some of the last square footage down to 4,500, under 5,000, one of the waivers.
Yeah, the waiver.
And again, for the public, we have to do these things. We have to increase the density because the state is making us. So, there's much we can do about that.
Well, just to clarify the record, there is no actual density increase here, just those waivers and concessions like you were talking about.
Commissioner Brand?
Yeah, I have to echo what's been said here. The, you know, if, I'd like to see that added articulation as well, that kind of flat walls just really don't do it for me. I mean, the fronts of the properties, they've got some really nice variation and, you know, material choices. And as you said, the tile selection is really great. We love to see tile roofs in Brentwood. And, you know, two-car garage. And, you know, out of the five at the very low price of $164,000, I mean, that's kind of the bargain of the century, so. Yeah.
I'm impressed with the layout, the materials that are being used, the variations. Complementary. Each home seems to complement the neighborhood, all in all. It looks really good. I like the fact that we had this conversation from the beginning that the low-low and low and moderate are going to be mixed in to the community and not somewhere clustered together. I like that and I appreciate it. So, I have nothing further to say about the design. The designs really look, look real good. I guess my question is, how long do you think before the project would begin? And anticipation of, when do you think you'll have it completed?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the kind comments. The, at this point, should we successfully navigate the initial sort of entitlement process? We'd start the improvement plan and design work. Probably we'd put us into the ground, starting grading summer of next year. Vertical construction in '25. And it's probably a two to two and a half year, depending on market condition, build out, sale out of the project from that point.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ziegler? Any further questions for the applicant? Seeing none? I will entertain a motion. Let's get back to Katie's page.
Well, the first one's easy. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-029, as written.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I entertain a motion on the vesting tentative subdivision map.
Can I also, sorry, really quick, just clarify as well for the added conditions for the tentative parcel map. To add the clerical error for the CLOMAR, the FEMA map, also needed to be updated on condition number six to those two that are up there.
Which resolution was that for? I remember seeing that and now I forgot which.
The tentative map I can pull. If we need to see it, I have the language here as well. It's in the PowerPoint presentation.
23-030.
Yeah, it's just basically the last sentence of condition six will say, "Applications for CLOMAR shall be prepared", instead of "Applications for LOMAR shall be prepared".
On the tentative map? Yeah.
Correct.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion for the tentative map? Subdivision map?
I'll attempt it. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-030 to approve the vesting tentative subdivision map, as further detailed in the staff report, with the following revisions, the revisions that are displayed in front of us, and the revision that was just suggested by staff.
Thank you. So, we understand that staff is at liberty to add the two conditions of approval to the map resolution shown on the screen, as well as correct the clerical error with regard to the CLOMAR on condition six. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes, that's the motion.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. And I'm looking for a motion on the design review.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-031 to approve the design review as further detailed in the staff report.
We have one additional condition.
And then the resolutions to be added, listed on the screen for the design review, for the, provide a visual and safety barrier at the northern property line, and to work on the project entry details to include clear delineation of private and public access along Lone Tree Way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you, applicant. Okay. Moving along to the next item. It is public hearing to consider amendments for the municipal code that will allow for and regulate medicinal cannabis deliveries as required by state law. Senior analyst Abraham Salinas will present the staff report. Mr. Salinas?
Just give me one moment while I get set up. Thank you.
Oh. Okay.
So, Chairperson Roberts, why, Mr. Salinas is getting set up. I thought I would take the opportunity to introduce Abraham. Abraham Salinas is our senior analyst in the city manager's office and works on economic development projects. And then, as other projects come to the city manager's office, he has been of assistance, and this is one of them. As there has been a change to state law, he has led the effort for the item that'll be before you this evening. So, while he's getting up, I know this is his first time and appreciates the opportunity that he has to present to you tonight, this item. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the introduction, Darren. If you could share my screen, April? Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairperson Roberts and members of the planning commission. My name is Abraham Salinas, as Darren mentioned. I'm a senior analyst with the city manager's office of Economic Development Division. I joined the city back in February. So, it's a pleasure to be at my first, presenting to you on my first planning commission. Thank you. So, today we'll be discussing a proposed amendment to the Brentwood Municipal Code in response to the passage of SB 1186, also known as the Medicinal Cannabis Patients' Rights Access Act. So, the regulation of cannabis has seen significant changes in the last decade. This presentation will provide a brief overview of cannabis-related bills passed in California since 2015 and their impact on local ordinances. We'll also discuss proposed amendments to municipal code and possible next steps. So, in October of 2015, Governor Brown signed three related bills, collectively known as the Medicinal Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, or MCRSA. This act governs a wide range of commercial cannabis activities, from cultivation to distribution. To maintain local control, the city adopted two ordinances in 2016, known as BMC Chapters 9.50 and 17.780. These ordinances prohibit various commercial cannabis activities enforced by different city departments. Zoning ordinance under Title 17 regulates the use of land and is generally enforced by community enrichment, while Title IX ordinance regulates personal behavior and is generally enforced by its police department. In addition to commercial cannabis activities, the ordinances prohibit cannabis cultivation, dispensaries, and deliveries, except for those deliveries made by primary caregiver to his or her qualified patients, all within city limits. In November of 2016, California voters approved Proposition 64, also known as the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use Marijuana Act, or AUMA. This act allows for the possession, use, and cultivation of recreational or adult use of marijuana, and has a regulatory system similar to the MCRSA. In response to the passage of the AUMA, BMC Chapters 9.50 and 17.780 were amended in 2017 by the city to comply with the state law while maintaining prohibitions on cannabis activities to the extent allowable. Fast forward to 2022. State Senator Scott Wiener introduced Senate Bill 1186, or the Medicinal Cannabis Patients' Rights of Access Act. This bill signed into law in September 18, 2022, prohibits local governments from enforcing, adopting or enforcing any regulation that prohibits or effectively prohibits the delivery of medicinal cannabis to patients or primary caregivers within their jurisdictions, beginning January 1, 2024. As provided by SB 1186, the state legislature has determined that access to medicinal cannabis is an integral aspect of access to health care and eliminating barriers to access to health care. is an integral aspect of access to health care and eliminating barriers to medicinal cannabis. Access is essentially, is essential to promoting and preserving the health of Californians for whom physicians have recommended the use of cannabis or cannabis products. It is the policy of the state and the intended legislature to ensure that Californians throughout the state have timely and convenient access to safe, effective, and affordable medicinal In line with the SB 1186, staff recommends amending Chapters 9.50 and 17.780 of the Brentwood Municipal Code to permit the retail sale of medicinal cannabis via delivery to medicinal cannabis patients. The proposed changes to Chapters 9.50 and 17.780 will continue to uphold the existing prohibitions on facilities for both medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis. The delivery and transport of medicinal cannabis within cities jurisdiction will remain restricted in line with the provisions of the AUMA and SB 1186. A decision not to modify the Brentwood Municipal Code to allow for the delivery of medicinal cannabis to qualified patients would expose the city to legal challenge by any host of individuals. These include the Attorney General, medicinal cannabis patients, and others. The following regulations were, sorry, the following regulations for delivery of medicinal cannabis within the city of Brentwood have been developed based on reference materials and guidelines provided by the League of California Cities. These are included in Attachment 2 of the staff report. They're also informed by existing ordinances and regulations from other jurisdictions of California, regulating both the delivery of medicinal, sorry, delivery of medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis prior to and subsequent to in the enactment of SB 1186. Per the new ordinances, the delivery of medicinal cannabis to medicinal cannabis patients would be subject to the following regulations. Deliveries of medicinal cannabis to a medicinal cannabis patient would have to be made to a fixed address and may not occur at locations such as public schools, daycare centers, youth centers, public parks, open spaces, public buildings, and establishments serving food or beverages. Second, a retailer with a physical address outside of the city that was to deliver medicinal cannabis or medicinal cannabis products to a patient or customer within city limits would be required to obtain a city business license prior to commencing any delivery service within city limits. All medicinal cannabis or medicinal cannabis products would have to be securely packaged and labeled according to state regulations, ensuring that they are not accessible to minors during transit. Delivery vehicles would be required to adhere to safety and security standards, which include GPS tracking, alarms, and secure storage. Lastly, the delivery of cannabis accessories, branded merchandise of the licensee or promotional materials would be prohibited. Staff is requesting that the planning commission review and adopt the resolution recommending approval of the draft ordinance to the city council, which repeals Chapter 17.780, also the marijuana facilities and cultivation of the municipal code, and replaces it in entirety to new Chapter 17.780, cannabis facilities and cultivation, and to leave in place existing prohibitions on cannabis cultivation, cannabis dispensaries, and non-medicinal cannabis deliveries within the city of Brentwood, also while allowing for the regulation of medicinal cannabis deliveries as required by SB 1186. In addition, staff has also provided a copy of the proposed revision to Chapter 9.50, which the planning commission has no formal role in reviewing or recommending. If recommended by the planning commission, the first and second readings of the updated ordinance will take place at future city council meetings. Pending council discussions, the ordinances will be, will take into effect by January 1, 2024. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions for the speaker? Mr. Ziegler?
I don't necessarily know. It's a clarifying question. I just think it's, I understand why we're doing this. I just think it's going to be very difficult to enforce a car coming across city limits. Obviously, there's no sales in the city, so that means they're coming from neighboring cities. What's going to trigger a car to say, hey, they're coming to deliver cannabis into our city and having to be able to enforce it? I mean, I understand why we have to do it, and I agree what we're doing here with the verbiage and cleaning up so we adhere to the laws, but unfortunately, it's one of the things that I think is going to be tough to have, to be executed or followed up on or enforced. I guess there really wasn't a question for you. I was going to start by how are they going to enforce it, but as I'm talking out loud, I know that's going to be extremely difficult.
It is very difficult, and the State Department of Cannabis Control is the one who further regulates it, the delivery of cannabis products. So they essentially are the responsible entity of any regulations at that level, and we can, we can provide any regulations as the ones I've listed, but I think that's as further extent that we can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yeah, I was wondering, what's the definition of an accessory?
I think there is an exact definition in the municipal code. I'm not sure if we can pull it up or if.
I'm just curious, you know, if somebody needs medicinal cannabis and needs a delivery, do they have to go ahead and jump in their car and go out and buy rolling papers? Or is, you know, can they have, can they bring them that? Can they bring them a pack of matches? I understand the branded stuff. That's, that's pretty clear, but I just, I'm just wondering if, if rolling papers are illegal, would a, would a pre-rolled marijuana cigarette be illegal? I mean, I don't know. I'm just curious about accessories. It just seems to me if somebody needs to consume something, they, I mean, I was getting B-12 shots for a while at home, and I was getting syringes, which is, the syringes would be the dicey part, I guess, so, but it was no problem, and I just don't really understand what an accessory is in this context.
So you're referring specifically to an accessory, not a cannabis product?
So cannabis accessory?
Right. We're, we're maintaining a ban, I don't have it in front of me anymore. You had it up on the screen. We're maintaining a ban on accessories, branded items, and I just want to know what an access, I know what a branded item is, and I understand that, but I don't understand what a, what an accessory is that's banned under this law.
And if you can give us one minute, if you have other questions to explore, that'd be great, and I'll pull that definition for you.
Commissioner Brand?
You talked about proximity to schools, daycare centers, et cetera, from delivery. Must be a fixed address. Can you elaborate on that specifically as it relates to Brentwood?
A fixed address meaning a private residence? I know, I can, well, we considered maybe restricting a certain distance, but if a, if a home is near a school, we can't restrict that. So a fixed address being a private residence?
I understand. So if I, in practice, the range of schools, daycare centers, and et cetera from delivery is useless? Because if I, if I want to deliver, if I want to deliver to a fixed address and I'm across the street from a school, we can't inhibit that based off of this language. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah. That would be limiting deliveries to a medicinal cannabis patient, which we cannot restrict.
So why do we put it in there? So why do we put that language in there?
So someone can't stand in front of a school or be within, on a school property and, you know, potentially order medicinal cannabis.
But saying fixed address takes care of that.
We could probably provide some clarifying.
I just want us to be honest, right? If we're, if we're going to say that, there's, I read that as, oh, well, we're going to prevent it from schools, but it doesn't do anything in, in practice, right? I mean, unless, maybe Darren has some ideas here.
No, this is very clearly restricting the ability to deliver medicinal cannabis to a school, to a daycare, to any of those facilities. It only can be done at a fixed residential address, and then we're specifically restricting a delivery to those, those sites. If you do not want to include those, that wording in there, we, we could take that out. But the council and planning commission in the past has been very restrictive, so we were trying to include everything we could think of based upon some other jurisdictions of what they've included to restrict. So, yes, could someone be across the street from a school? Absolutely, because there is residential properties immediately adjacent, but they wouldn't be able to put the address of a school and then have it delivered there.
Okay, maybe I just misunderstood it based off of the, the phrase range of versus, the, that wasn't clear to me, but I think the way that you described it, I very much, I understand that.
Great. Thank you.
And so was it, I'm trying to remember where you had it up there, and I'm trying to find it here. Is it, say, fixed address or fixed residential address? Because a fixed address could be a place, my business. So just for clarification, are we allowing it only to residences, or if one of us had office space here in Brentwood, can we have it delivered to the office? I'm just, I mean, right? So I just want to make sure, if we're going to be clear, that's, I mean, be clear, if we only want to go into residences, then do we need to add the verbiage resident, a residential address? I'm just posing that to everybody. I mean.
Well, a medical facility might be okay too.
I'm sorry?
A medical facility might be okay too.
Yeah, well, that's why I said, because I know, I know we were saying a residential, but I don't know that in here it's, it says a fixed address, so I don't know if we're leaving that open, the fixed address open and not specifically saying residential, so it would incorporate some of those others at the same time excluding the ones that we're trying to exclude. Just make sure we're on the same page.
And through the chair, I know residential is given as an example, but I do worry that if we narrow down the list of fixed addresses to which this substance could be delivered, we might run afoul of that final section, which provides that the section shall not be interpreted as prohibiting medicinal cannabis patients within the city from purchasing by delivery sufficient medicinal cannabis to meet their needs, just because you may be a patient who has need of delivery at your place of work because you're not home during the day and it can't be delivered there during the day. So I don't think I would change that qualification. And if you'll indulge me for one further minute, April, would you share my screen? We have the definition of cannabis accessories in response to Commissioner Flor's question. I can read it, it's just kind of long, and you might want to see what's all included There we go. I'm afraid I can't make it a whole lot bigger than that. So any equipment, products, or materials of any kind which are used, intended for use, or designed for use in planting, propagating, cultivating, growing, harvesting, manufacturing, compounding, converting, producing, processing, preparing, testing, analyzing, packaging, repackaging, storing, smoking, vaporizing, or containing cannabis, or for ingesting, inhaling, or otherwise introducing cannabis or cannabis products into the human body.
Thank you so much for that. That does answer my question.
Okay.
And it does, the reason for my question was, was that if people need medicinal cannabis, should we be restricting their ability to obtain the means to dose themselves with the medicine? I mean, if they're having a tincture, should we be banning an eyedropper? If they're having, if they're planning to smoke it, should we be banning papers? So I'm not asking you, I'm just saying rhetorically, I'm asking my, actually, my fellow commissioners. I just, I understand not wanting to, all the cultivation stuff is fine, all the branded stuff is fine, you know, if you don't, if you want to make it so a person can't have, I don't know, a ball cap with somebody's pot store label on it or something, that's fine, but if somebody needs, needs cannabis as a medicine, and the state, through the voters, has recognized that cannabis can be used as a medicine, then I think the means of administering that medicine should be deliverable as well if a person needs, needs it to be delivered, you know? I think we're talking about people that are like in their, in their 70s that are in a, in a facility that don't, that can't travel. That's why we're, that's why the state is doing this, and they should, if, if you can bring them, you know, some marijuana, but they can't consume it, then you haven't really helped them at all. So that, that's just my general comment. And, oh, on packet page, what, what page is this? Well, page 198, it says, "Deliveries of medical cannabis to a medicinal cannabis patient must be made to fixed addresses and may not occur at locations such as schools, daycare centers, youth centers, public parks and open spaces, public buildings, and establishments serving food and food or beverages." So by my reading, it doesn't say residential, but a public building might be a place of business. Definitely an establishment serving food or beverages would be a business. So, yeah, I, I don't, again, what's the definition of a public building? Is Dirk's office a public building? I mean, the public can go there. I don't know.
Sorry. Assistant City Manager shaking his head, no, that that wouldn't be considered a public building.
Commissioner Brand? Oh, go right ahead.
A public building, a public building would be similar to this city hall, a public library, a government-owned and operated facility in which the public's service is being provided, not a public-private business.
Obviously, because I guess my building's privately owned.
It is.
Okay.
I'm just reviewing that same line item there. And if, if the purpose of this is to specifically exclude certain types of facilities, buildings, what have you, I guess you could use those terms relatively interchangeably, this list looks incomplete, in my opinion, and I can't tell you off the top of my head why, but I think we need to have another go at specifically outlining potentially more items here. It just doesn't, doesn't seem complete. So if we're specifically drawing these as, as no-go zones and specifically okaying everything else, I would want a bit more of an exhaustive review of that list personally.
So, you know, and that's all good. I think it's wonderful, but I'm trying to figure out what the objective is. What is the objective here? Because there are young people that would bicker with this whole process to say that they need delivery because of medicinal purposes. So it can't be, I just need to understand what the objective, if I knew what the objective was, I could better understand what would, what I'm doing in this, in this narrative. Is the objective to prohibit marijuana farms from coming into Brentwood? Is the objective to minimize transport of cannabis into the city of Brentwood? What is the objective?
I believe the objective is to maintain our existing prohibitions on cultivation, commercial activities of medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis. Back as when we did in 2017, when we amended both of the chapters according to state law, we're doing something similar. So the objective is to maintain those restrictions to the fullest extent possible, you know, that, that essentially is the objective.
That's good. I need to know that. Okay, great. Commissioner Ziegler?
No, I don't have any additional comments at this time.
Any more questions from the commissioners on this?
I know we, I know we brought up enforcement. I don't know what the city's strategy is, and maybe this is more of a council question, but is that something that we can encourage a line item on or some type of, I don't think it's our purview.
It's not.
I'll defer to Katie.
I would say two things. The state haven't, hasn't given us much in the way of real options for enforcement. What is available to us? I think Abraham has tried to include in the ordinance before you. But number two, it occurs to me, we've strayed pretty far from clarifying questions, and I know we don't have anyone in the audience here, but I don't know if they're And I know we don't have anyone in the audience here, but I don't know if there might be anyone on Zoom wishing to address you for the public hearing. So if at this time the Planning Commission wanted to take a quick detour for the public hearing and open it to see if there are any comments, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you. And so at this time, I will open it up for public hearing.
At this time, I have one hand raised, Danny Bruce Dorman.
Hello, good evening, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Great. Boy, let me start off, I'm not, and I want to be clear rather, I'm not opposed to cannabis. The health benefits are far better than prescription drugs. I've actually helped get campaigns for a cannabis business in Colorado. But it is still against federal law. And as noted in the agenda, there are problems inherent with a true cash-only business. And that's why I support our current legislation on the books. I've read the ordinances. My challenge is that I think that there are too many holes for big pot, commercial pot, to wiggle its way in. Listening to everyone tonight, it's akin to trying to stop the kid on the corner, you know, selling a quarter ounce, when we really should be worried about the truckloads of corporate pot coming in. When I read these statutes, they need to be more persuasive. We need to look at it as ironclad as we can, because as we've shown with oil, if we don't do the job right, we get behind the eight ball. As we've shown with housing, if we don't get it right, we get what we get. What I'm trying to avoid is, two years from now, when that seller's joint winds up becoming a grow house, because somebody found a loophole because we weren't clear on a particular ordinance, that we're going to wind up like that. So please, 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 I beg you to have our city attorney, when she's not agreeing to disagree, to look into this, and maybe even outside legal scholars to look into this and make sure we can make it as airtight as we can before January 1st, 2024. Thank you.
At this time, we have no other hands raised.
Okay, at this time, I'll close public, public hearing. Have a motion to close it.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, open it up to the commission for further discussion. Commissioner Ziegler?
I'm trying to think what else we can say. I, I mean, I hear what Mr. Dorman was saying, and I think all of us are on the same lines of wanting to make sure this is as tight as we can get it. But I'm sitting here saying, okay, what else can we say or do within this to make that happen? That's kind of like my struggle right now, is like, I see this, I don't know what I don't know, so it's hard for me to say this is what else we need to put in here, or to articulate in these, in the verbiage to make sure that we're capturing or making this as broad as we can with the legal confines that we're dealing with.
Is there a possibility that we could have further study on this? I know that we got a lot of markup on this document. And I, for one, don't, I personally would like to have just a little more time, one, to figure out what the other municipalities are dealing with, to make sure that we don't miss anything. That's just my, that's just, oh, sorry, that's just my thinking than to run into, rush into saying okay or no. I, it's an important topic for the city of Brentwood.
So Commissioner Roberts, your question, are you asking about cannabis in general in the city, or the item? So the thing is, the city council has made, and the planning commission adopted our current cannabis ordinance. We're not recommending any changes to anything other than there was a change in the state law that's required to be put in place before the end of the year. So that's, that's January 1st. So what we're discussing is very, a finite portion of the business that's going on in the state of California, and that is folks that, who have a medicinal card, who are able to receive cannabis for medicinal purposes and allowing for that delivery to occur in their home. Before, we could restrict that, said they could not occur. There's a new state law that says, no, local governments cannot do that. So the only thing that we're doing this evening, or proposing to the Planning Commission, is making changes based upon this new state law. If the Planning Commission wanted a future agenda item that the city council then could consider as related to expanding our cannabis ordinance beyond this one small change that we're trying to do to meet state law, that would be a broader discussion. If there's questions related to this portion of medicinal, local jurisdictions are lining up, and one of the things is, we weren't the first to do this, so we were able to look at some of the other agencies and what they've done. And that's what we've proposed with you this evening. And as a result of the Planning Commission and city council being very restrictive, we tried to include language to restrict things as we've done here, as much as we can. Some cities are very open, they want this, and they don't want to put any restrictions on it, but that has not been the direction here with the city of Brentwood. So I guess my question to Chairperson Roberts is, are you looking at a broader cannabis discussion, or very specific to medicinal use?
Well, the thing that's missing for me is the enforcement side of this, and how do you deal with the compliance piece, which says that individuals who are having cannabis delivered to their home or a location, as you've described in this document, actually have a card or something that substantiates that they can have this? That's my concern, because at this point in time, there's absolutely no reason why anyone can't make a phone call and have somebody deliver cannabis to their home or location. So absence of enforcement, which unfortunately throughout the state of California, and for that matter nationally, there really isn't any. I just want to make sure that when we get caught, when we begin to have these kinds of discussions, it's set aside for folks that need it, but there's this built-in abuse that comes along with that. And before you know it, you've got a lot of trafficking going back and forth. And I'm careful about, being very careful about that, and what maybe other communities might be doing that feel very much the same. I mean, you might have the information, and I'd like for you to share that with us.
Yes, so we'll continue to do enforcement as we do right now through community code enforcement, but there is a state agency that helps regulate a portion of this. And then the city does have, as we do with all of our codes, we have a community, I say code enforcement, Eric, community enrichment, we have a number of staff. Some is proactive and some is reactive. If you've, if you've used our Brentwood 24/7 app, that's a reactive way that we, that we go out and we enforce our codes. So there would be a variety of ways. Do I see the city spending significant additional resources to try to enforce this medicinal law? No, on an active basis. However, as we hear about things, absolutely, we're going to do everything that we can, and our powers to enforce the codes that we have on our books. We don't avoid that, but it's not, it's not as though we're adding an additional, including enrichment officer to help do this, or a police officer to do this.
Right.
So it would be with existing resources and with the state agency that helps regulate this.
I thank you for that. Commissioner Floyd?
Yeah, I want to piggyback on some things, and maybe I can set people's minds to rest a little bit here, because I was sitting out there when this law was passed, and I paid quite a bit of attention to it. So I kind of know some of the details. Don't quote me on anything, but I will try to make you guys feel better. Brentwood, at the time they passed this law, banned all kinds of cannabis sale, production, all cannabis activity in the city. It is enforceable, it's in the criminal code, that's why it's in chapter nine. It's enforceable as an infraction, which means they can fine people. It's also enforceable as a code violation, which is why it's in chapter 17. So I know that the enforcement works, and I will tell you why. The house next door to me was a grow house.
There's a one.
A grow house. Neighbors moved out, and some people moved in and started growing pot in the house next door, which happens. And that problem persisted until the city council came in one day and made a clarification to the fine. So the fine said, well, you can grow six pot plants in your house. And the fine said, for every one over six, it's $500 plus $100. It's like, it's $100 per, it's $500 for the first one, $100 for each one. City council said, oh, let's make that per day, okay? So all of a sudden, that fine is astronomically higher, and people packed up and left. And so now the house next door to me is someplace where people live again. So there are, there is extensive enforcement. As far as how do you enforcement, the way you enforce any crime, somebody sees it and says something, people do crimes all the time, some kid steals gum at the 7-Eleven, how do you enforce that if nobody sees it? You don't. It just happens. But these laws are enforceable, they're reportable. Person can go to the Brentwood 24/7 app, or they can call the city, or they can call the police, or they can call community enrichment. So there's, there's no shortage of mechanisms to enforce this law. All they're saying here is that now, instead of having a total ban on all cannabis, because the state says so, because they passed this new law, we have to allow deliveries of medicinal. And I have no problem with any of this, because it is the will of the city council that we have these laws. I'm not necessarily having a position tonight on whether or not I agree with these laws. I'm just saying, these laws are here, we have them, they're very tight, we don't have a problem with them, and I don't think we need to go through and, through the whole law, we just need to look at these changes. And that's why the only, the only change that I would even suggest is just that if they're going to allow marijuana to be delivered to somebody for medicinal purposes, I think they ought to allow that person to also be delivered the means to dose themselves with that medicine. And so I would say something like, no accessories other than those needed to administer the medicine, right? But other than that, there is no question in my mind that Brentwood has a very tight law, it's been there since, what, 2017, 2018, and it's working. And whether or not that law should be changed is a topic for another day, but the law is very tight.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Brand?
I'm just reading through this, and a lot of it seems arbitrary and unfortunately somewhat useless. I mean, you look at item four, delivered vehicles must adhere to safety and security standards, it's like, okay, I wear a seatbelt and I can lock my door. Like, I mean, really, that's probably what this comes down to. Including GPS tracking, oh, the driver has a cell phone, GPS tracking, right? Alarms, yeah, you know, if you try to bust out the window or whatever. And secure storage, it's like, has he got a safe underneath his front seat? I don't, I don't, I mean, presumably, this is our sort of minimum compliance, based off of what I'm hearing, and in terms of like, what the state is asking of us and what the sort of will of city council has been up until this point, as described in the 2017 municipal change. But I just, as far as enforcement, and I did, it's, yeah.
Keep in mind, we're, Commissioner Floyd hit on it too, is our city attorney also sent something out, you know, there was a typo in our packet, so it did, a red line came out to us that showed kind of just some of the language that's being changed. Like Commissioner Flor said, we're not reinventing the wheel here, we're basically taking what we already have, and just taking some of our verbiage to make sure it meets the new law that goes into play January 1st. If at a future date, we want to propose, or the city council wants to do something, I'm not trying to belittle what you said. At this point in time, all we're trying to do is make sure we adhere to the state law that's going to affect January 1st, 2024. If we want to take action later on, that's totally different. But tonight, I think all that's in front of us is just the red line that the city attorney sent to us, let's look at this, if there's anything we need to change. I hear what Commissioner Flor is saying, and, you know, we're making a recommendation to the city council, I don't think that's a bad idea. I mean, obviously, yeah, I mean, I'm not a cannabis person, but I'm, obviously, if you deliver cannabis to me, I mean, I need to use something to get it in my body. So I don't have a problem if there's a recommendation to modify that verbiage. And then council can make a determination how they want to either keep that or retract that, or whatever they want to do. I don't have anything else on this topic at this point in time.
And that's fair, and I'm just looking to be as verbose as possible when it comes to, you know, we need to review this, and we need to inform ourselves and the public so that we have the best perception of what's happening here. So, yeah, I can appreciate that, for sure.
Okay, Commissioner Ziegler?
Well, my question is, I don't know if we're ready for motion yet, but if we're, there is no resolution number on this yet. So if we choose to approve this, to send it to council, I'm curious how we?
So, yeah, and you could just make a motion to adopt a resolution to recommend the city council, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
The resolution is in your packet, it was provided to the public online as well. In addition, I did want to note that the red line that you spoke of has been printed out and left in the back of the chambers for members of the public to access. It will also be uploaded to the Planning Commission's website so that the public is easily able to see what is suggested to be changed.
Okay, is there any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the, to recommend to the city council repeal or replace Brentwood municipal code, chapter 17-780, as detailed in the staff report.
Have a second?
Can we, can we add that suggested change?
Oh, with adding verbiage to allow, with delivery, accessories that allow the individual to?
Consume the medicine.
Consume as needed?
Necessary for medicinal usage.
If the commission could direct its attention to the screen, we've taken the liberty to put together some language, and this language just uses the same verbiage as the statute.
That's a really good one.
All right, thank you.
So I amend my, my motion to include the verbiage that's on the screen presented to the Planning Commission at this time.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Okay, coming down to the wire here. Okay, at this time, our informational reports, transplan.
Meeting was canceled.
Okay, design review subcommittee.
Still no meetings this year.
And land use, none. New request? Any from the commission? Seeing none? Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next regular Planning Commission meeting scheduled October 3rd, 7:00 PM, and will be held here at Council Chambers, 150 Central Park, not Central Park, City Parkway. Thank you, have a good evening.